Good morning. It's very good to be with you all today. It's wonderful to be in this part of the state and I really appreciate your warm reception and the great turnout that you all have given VSBA today. I know that we're all here for improving all we can for students and I appreciate all that you do every day for that. My name is Bob Hunley. I'm a board member in Hanover County and I have the pleasure as serving this year as the VSBA president. I'd like to thank all of you for the work you're doing as the leaders, advocates, and supporters of public education in our state. Today's hot topic will be focused on teacher shortages across the Commonwealth, a topic that is important and relevant to every school division regardless of its locality. To kick off our session today, I'd like to introduce Patty Pitts, Assistant Superintendent of Teacher Education and Licensor for the Virginia Department of Education, to speak to us on teacher shortages, recruitment, and retention. Patty, thank you for joining us today. I now turn over the podium to you. Please join me and welcome Patty.
Thank you. It certainly is a pleasure to be here with you today. I bring greetings from Dr. Steve Staples, our Superintendent of Public Instruction. I've worked in teacher education and licensure for many years and sometimes I cannot believe I'm as old as I am when I think about how many years I have worked at the Department of Education, but it's been over 35 years, most of which has been in the area of teacher education and licensure. As you know, we have an advisory board on teacher education and licensure and Ruth Wallace served faithfully for the Virginia School Boards Association on representing school boards and now we have James Meyer and Dr. Meyer is with the Spotsylvania School Board. So, we really do appreciate the work that you do and thank you Gina for inviting me. I do apologize that I wasn't able to come when this was scheduled before, but I'm a little scared of, afraid of driving in the snow and as you will recall, we might have had a smaller crowd if we had held it. So, I wasn't able to venture here in the storm the last time, but thank goodness Gina ordered very good weather for today and yesterday for travel. Today, we're going to talk about a topic which I know is of concern to you as well as the Department of Education, the Board of Education, our colleagues in West Virginia, and that is the growing teacher shortage in the Commonwealth and across the nation. Being in teacher education and licensure for years, I've gone through cycles where we had severe shortages and where they, where we had surpluses from time to time and now we are in a stage of critical shortages. This year has been the worst in recent years. Just to tell you anecdotally, we've had school divisions that have had to hire substitute teachers to fill positions and those positions in some cases still remain unfilled by qualified teachers. Want to begin by just previewing with you the 2017-18 critical shortage areas in Virginia. As you can see from the slide, number one is special education and that is the most acute area of shortage in the Commonwealth and across the nation. And, we're going to talk a little bit about how this, these are calculated and you'll understand a little bit more why special ed appears as number two. And that's very concerning when elementary education has not been an area historically where we've had such problems filling positions, but you'll see middle education, career and technical education, and mathematics even though it's not at the top of the list and part of that is because of the numbers as you will understand when I describe the methodology for calculating these shortages. But, this year I've received more calls than I've ever received asking about how we can increase the number of mathematics teachers in Virginia. You will also see that we have shortages in school counseling, English, foreign languages, health and PE, and yes, history and social science. That is an area historically in which we've had surpluses of teachers, but we are now even struggling in some cases to fill those positions as well. To give you a little bit of background as to how we designate the shortages, we take the total number of teaching positions that are reported unfilled. School divisions are required to report that information to us and then we calculate the teaching positions that are filled by provisionally licensed teachers, school boards that were having difficulty finding an individual who had a five-year renewable license, and those teachers who are teaching out of field, have a license but are not teaching in the area that he or she has that license. Okay, we, there's a really good article and you have this slide presentation. I would really invite you to read the September 15, 2016 research paper, "A Coming Crisis in Teaching." Linda Darling-Hammon was one of the writers and she is a nationally known expert in the area of teachers, teacher preparation, and this article is very good, so I would invite you to read it in its entirety, but I'm just going to go over the four main factors that they found that impact why teachers enter and why teachers leave the profession. Number one, compensation. Don't need to explain that any further. Research shows that teachers who are well-prepared certainly perform better in the classroom, but also stay longer. And that is a major issue. In this issue of teacher shortages, we need to think about not only teacher recruitment, but after we recruit them and get them into the profession, how are we supporting them and retaining them? Because we're losing too many teachers after they enter the teaching field. Mentoring and induction. Even though we have a small amount of money at the state to support mentoring programs and clinical faculty programs, mentoring and induction is still an issue. We need to support the teachers once they come into the classroom to help give them the support that they need to be successful every day, especially a brand-new teacher. The statute in Virginia requires that all new teachers must be assigned a mentor and that mentor needs to be someone more than, if you run into any trouble, Patty Pitts is down the end of the hall and you can run down there and ask her if you have a problem. That's not the intent of the law. We need to ensure that our teachers have someone who they can rely on and who is an experienced educator, who can mentor them and help them as they move through the induction process. And the last factor outlined in this article are teaching conditions. So, teaching conditions is an area that we are all certainly working on, the climate of the school, school leadership. We know that strong leadership in a school certainly does help teachers be successful as well as retain teachers. Let's talk a little bit about teacher preparation. And first, we're going to talk about the national figures as far as enrollment in teacher preparation programs from 2009 to 2014. Now, if you look at this slide, you will see a decline and the decline is widening. In five years, we've had over, a decline of over 250,000 individuals enrolled in teacher preparation programs. Now, that doesn't mean that these numbers reflect everyone who has completed a program, but these are the enrollment figures of individuals who indicated that they would like to teach and they were enrolled and counted in that particular year. Now, let's look at the national trends in enrollment comparing the student enrollment versus the enrollment in programs. And you will see where we have an increase in student enrollment overall for K to 12, but a decline in teacher preparation enrollment. Now, let's look a little closer to home. Let's look at Virginia trends in enrollment. What you have seen nationally in the previous slide holds true in Virginia. Our K to 12 population is increasing, but the number of individuals enrolled in teacher preparation programs is declining and that is very concerning. We are also very concerned about the diversity of our teaching population. You can see from this slide, the enrollment in Virginia programs at two-year community colleges, four-year public institutions, and four-year private institutions. And you may say, two-year community colleges, individuals don't come out of teacher preparation programs, but this figure would reflect those individuals who are in career switcher programs. We do have a community college program, which we'll talk a little bit about later, as well as those individuals who are in teacher preparation and plan to use articulation agreements to move from the community college to a four-year institution. And, these figures certainly are concerning. We need to address diversity in our teaching force because it does not reflect the student population in K to 12. Now, let's turn our attention to Virginia program completers, not those who enrolled, but actually completers of programs. We have 36 institutions of higher education that are approved by the Virginia Board of Education to offer programs to prepare individuals to be teachers and other instructional personnel. In addition to those 36, we have four career switcher programs in Virginia. So, we have 40 providers and the enrollment in 2013-14, as you can see, is just over 11,000 and the program completers were 3,924. And that's about the number that we are seeing most years, give or take, it varies a little bit from year to year. Now, remember, not everyone of those almost 4,000 individuals are going to teach or serve in Virginia because they may go next door to West Virginia. We don't want you to talk to our teachers though while you're here. We appreciate your being here, but actually, we have teachers from West Virginia coming to Virginia and vice versa. So, we have individuals who are going back home, so this does not reflect the number of individuals who may be available to teach in Virginia. Now, I apologize, this slide is a little bit pale, but what it basically shows you is the number of program completers by region. Now, Region 5, if you can see, Region 5 there, if you can see that, that's a little bit clearer, that's the area in which we have the most program completers being prepared. Now, you will probably say this number doesn't match the other program completers, this is only for traditional programs. So, 3,535 individuals in 13-14 completed traditional programs. When I say that, I'm talking about our colleges and universities where they complete a traditional program, complete student teaching. Licenseur in Virginia. And this is an area of the presentation that I want to spend a little bit of time explaining how licensure works and the different paths or routes to licensure that the Board of Education has approved in Virginia. Now, again, I've already told you, we had 36 traditional programs, three, and there's a little bit of an error on this slide and I apologize and I will fix that and send it to Gina and she can disseminate it. There are three alternative career switcher programs that are connected to a college or university that already has approved programs. That's what it means when it says IHE. The last one, the 1, is the Virginia Community College and we certainly know that's an institution of higher education, but they traditionally do not prepare teachers, so it should not say non-IHE, so if you have that, just mark through that. We do have reciprocity in Virginia and in Virginia, we do recognize the completion of an approved program in another state or holding a clear valid license in another state and that individual may have received his or her license through an alternate route, but we recognize that for the purpose of granting comparable endorsements in Virginia. So, if someone from West Virginia, since our friends here from West Virginia, who has a full West Virginia license, who may have received it through an alternate route, who may have completed an approved program through West Virginia University, or who may have added endorsements by testing, I'm not sure if they have that laudability in West Virginia, but we do, we would recognize that license to grant comparable endorsements in Virginia. Now, individuals still have to meet ancillary requirements, statutory requirements such as child abuse recognition intervention, first aid, CPR, AED training, et cetera, as well as meet our assessment requirements unless the individual has completed at least three years of successful full-time teaching experience in K through 12 in a public school, an accredited non-public school, then the individual with that full clear license and that three years of experience can be exempted from the requirement of testing. Now, there is a, there was a new bill passed by the legislation that was approved that will become effective July 1, where a school board or a superintendent through this reciprocity route may request that licensure examinations be waived if certain conditions exist, such that the person has that full clear license with no deficiencies and the individuals applying for an initial license, the superintendent or the school board can request that that requirement of assessments be waived if they're coming through reciprocity on a full clear license. I'd like to talk a little bit about the alternate routes because I think that sometimes in school divisions, we forget about the options that are available for individuals who may wish to change careers. We have had alternate routes in Virginia for as many years as, at least 40 years. However, they have expanded in recent years and there's some additional changes that will be reflected in new licensure regulations that are near the end, I kind of smiled because we started this in 2013, but we're near the end of the Administrative Process Act, which is a regulatory requirement in Virginia, and some of those new changes will be helpful to you in recruiting new teachers. But first, we have a provisional license. Most of you are aware of the provisional license that's issued to someone who has allowable deficiencies in Virginia, such as someone who majors in mathematics, who would now like to teach, and we can issue a provisional license upon the employment of a school board and we can issue the provisional license for three years and individuals must meet the requirements for that license with, three years, with one exception. Does anybody know what the one exception is that we can extend a provisional license? Anybody? No? No, it's something totally different from where your answers are leading and that is for military deployment. And you really need to be aware of this because if you, as a school board member or as a superintendent or human resources officer, needs to understand that if you have a teacher and we have them who are in the military and who are deployed for active deployment, then we can add on, if you're deployed in any part of a school year, we will add on another year to the provisional license. Only exception, by law, we cannot issue a provisional license for a period to extend the three-year period. We also have something that we call experiential learning. This is one path to teaching that many people are unaware of and we are really trying to help folks in HR and people who want to switch careers learn more about. It's very similar to the provisional license in that if an individual has five years of work experience, professional work experience, it doesn't have to be related to the area in which he or she wants to teach, but five years of work experience and has a baccalaureate degree from a regionally accredited college or university, because all degrees and coursework need to be from regionally accredited colleges and universities, and has passed a praxis, we've been calling it praxis too, the Educational Testing Service now calls it a content or specialty assessment, but the praxis assessment, a school division could employ that individual and get a provisional license for three years. So, let me give you an example. You have an individual who has a major in general engineering, but doesn't really have all the coursework for mathematics. Many ti, most of the time, they will have calculus, but they may, the person may have 15 hours. But you know that this is a very bright, young individual who has a lot to offer in your school division and has five years of work experience. It may not have all been in engineering, it could have been in, working in a restaurant, it could be any type of work experience that can be documented. And that, and you tell that individual, go and take the mathematics praxis, specialty test in math. If that person can pass it, then you can request a provisional license. Many school divisions are using this option, especially for middle school math individuals who can pass those assessments and do not need to take additional work for their content, but will have to meet other professional studies requirements, human growth and development, curriculum and instruction, classroom behavior management, they will need to complete the other assessments, this person would have to take the VCLA. So, that is something that you need to be aware of and when the new regulations come out, it reduces the experience from five to three years. So, you do need to know about that. The career switcher program, we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. We also have adding endorsements by testing. Individuals who have a teaching license, a postgraduate professional license or collegiate professional license, bless you, a five-year renewable license, that individual can take a test with the exception of elementary education and there, we don't have a praxis for content for special ed, so those areas are not on the table for this option. But individuals can take a test and add endorsement by testing. Does anybody know the most recent test that was just added? Oh, you do know that. Algebra I. It's a long time coming, but now we have an Algebra I assessment, it's not used for initial licensure. Algebra is an add-on endorsement, it's only used for the purpose of individuals who wish to take the test and add an endorsement by testing. And the one prior to that, do you know? Boy, you are good. ESL, English as a Second Language, that test is now available for individuals as well. Now, the one point that I want to make, because you may be advising folks and I don't want you to give them misinformation, if one already has a provisional license and needs a test for that initial license, they cannot add on until they take their first test. So, if somebody has a provisional licensing in chemistry and wants to add math, the person cannot just go take the math test to add it to chemistry when the person hasn't taken the first test in chemistry. So, that's very important. One of the things that we, that I want you to be aware of is that we did a little digging with our data to look at the completion rate, the three-year completion rate, takes three years. So, we looked at individuals who were issued a provisional license and looked three years out to see how many people, what the percentage was, who actually completed the requirements for the provisional license. It was about 75%. 75.6% of the individuals who were issued that provisional license received their full license. So, that means that we lost almost a quarter of those individuals who are provisionally licensed. Now, we don't know the reasons for that. Some of those individuals may have found that teaching wasn't what they really wanted to do, perhaps they relocated, went to another state, perhaps the individual was non-renewed. We don't know the reasons, but we do know that we are losing individuals who were issued provisional licenses. Approximately 5% of our teaching force is teaching under a provisional license, about We also know at looking at results from praxis and also a study that was done by the National Education Association and the Educational Testing Service, that there are achievement gaps on licensure assessments based upon race and they do mirror achievement gaps in K to 12. And that is concerning. We really need to do more to provide more preparation for individuals to be successful on these assessments. And, the study also indicated that the gap between white and minority test takers was greater on constructed response questions than multiple choice questions. Educated workforce. I thought it would be helpful for you to actually know how many people we do actually have in our workforce. We have about 96,000 instructional personnel and this does exclude principals and assistant principals. So, basically, we're talking about about 96,000 teachers, guidance counselors, who are considered teachers in Virginia, librarians are included in this number. You'll see that 40% have baccalaureate degrees, 57 have master's degree, and we are predominantly a female teaching force. It's about 80/20, but you see the exact numbers before you. Well, you would if I had moved the slide. Also, wanted to share with you that the, and I mentioned this before, that the race and ethnicity of our teaching force does not match the race and ethnicity of our students. For example, in the category of white instructional personnel, we're about, we're 78.6% of our teaching force is, is white and for black, it's 11.3%. And you know for our black students, we're about 23%. And you know for our black students, we're about 23%. So it does not mirror. Dr. Staples asked for some data, and the University of Virginia helped us to take the information and the data and create some what we call heat maps to clearly show by region where we have the highest degree of shortages. And we had a couple of folks from Ed Policy Works work with us, and we provided the data, and they helped us with these slides, so I certainly want to give them credit for their excellent work. Now, this slide reflects positions unfilled. This is not a reflection of the critical shortage top 10 areas data, which also includes other factors. This is only the unfilled. Now, we collect every year the number of unfilled positions, we had over 1,000 this year statewide that were unfilled. We don't know the reason why, we do not collect information about why the positions were not filled. It could be that there was not funding available for the position, could be that couldn't find someone to fill the position. So we don't know all the reasons why, but you can see clearly from this slide, the special education is the most critical area of shortage, and elementary education is very concerning. This is probably the first year that I can recall superintendents and human resources representatives calling our office and saying, do you know we're having difficulty filling an elementary education position? So you know that we are really at a concerning stage when you cannot fill all of your elementary So now let's look at regional and division needs. This slide depicts the percentage of total positions unfilled by region. Now, this takes into account the number of positions that they have and the number that were unfilled to give you the percentages. And let's move on to the next slide. And this is by numbers. You will see that Region 4, which is our very densely populated Fairfax County, Loudon, Prince William, largest school divisions, some of the largest school divisions in the state, Fairfax being the one, that they had 383 unfilled positions in 4, just in Region 4. But that does not mean that they have necessarily a different issue than you do. Everyone is having difficulty filling positions. So you have to really take these large numbers and break them down by regions. Even though the number of positions unfilled was highest in 4, special education remains, you can see, and you have these slides, so I'm not going to go through each of these because I want to spend a little bit of time at the end of this presentation explaining to you some of the initiatives and some of the other considerations that we may need to make for these critical shortages. That's special education, as you can see there, number still high for elementary education, pre-K through 6, and that includes pre-K through 3. We combine all elementary areas. So this is middle education, 6 through 8, and that would include all four academic Mathematics. And the mathematics also includes algebra, it does not include middle math, but it does include algebra. And sciences. Now, interesting enough, people communicate with our offices and say, I think you made a mistake on the top 10 shortages in Virginia because the sciences did not appear. That does not mean that we are not struggling finding science teachers. Because they're not perhaps as many in secondary, for example, you may have one physics teacher, one earth science teacher, you may have one chemistry teacher, and biology teachers are not quite as difficult to find as some of those other areas. Doesn't mean that there's not a struggle, it just means that the numbers did not rise this year to making the list. But again, some of that has to do with purely the numbers and the volume. I'd like to highlight a few of the programs, these are certainly not all of the programs that the Department of Education has initiated to address shortages. For example, John Eisenberg, he's Assistant Superintendent for Special Education and Support Services in the Department of Education, has federal funds, and he has many initiatives to help increase the pool of special educators. What I would like to do today is highlight, in the interest of time, some of the areas that we are coordinating within my particular division. I will tell you, though, it's really interesting, and I was a little surprised, I'm not easily surprised anymore, I guess I've been around so many years, but John and I had a discussion, and he said, when we are going out to superintendent's meetings and key instructional leaders' meetings, we're hearing some suggestions about special ed and saying, why don't you offer the course, the prerequisite course for a provisional special education license? I deliberately didn't cover that initially when I was talking about licensure, because I will do that now. Because of the acute shortage in special ed, special ed is the only area in which an individual could be licensed, in which they are very close to meeting their specific endorsement area content requirements, special ed. As you know, if someone has a baccalaureate degree from regionally accredited college or university, has taken the prerequisite course, that would include characteristics of individuals with disabilities and legal aspects of disabilities, and who has a planned program and who is employed as a special educator in one of your school systems, you can request what we call a provisional special education license. During the three years, the individual must complete all requirements. Now, certainly that is not the best path for one to become a teacher, we understand that. And many times you are trying to find individuals who've already been prepared as a teacher, who are willing to now prepare to teach special education. So we sent out a superintendent's memorandum, and with some federal funds, we had 100 slots available from Radford University to offer the prerequisite course for individuals who the school system was very interested in considering for employment in the fall, and the course would be offered free of charge except for, I think, $37 for the book that the individual would have to pay for. We thought we would get 100 statewide. After a week after that memo was disseminated, we've had over three, Radford has received over 300 requests for those 100 slots. So I was surprised, I really did think we would get the 100. We are going to disseminate those slots across the state, 12 per region, with no school division getting more than two, and we said, on May 3rd, if we didn't have enough, we would give them to other regions, but as you just heard, the response was enormous. So now let's chat just a little bit about some of those initiatives that we have in Virginia. One is our Teach Virginia program, which is a statewide job bank, and this is free of charge for use by school divisions. Most school divisions use it, but I have to say not all. So if you are a school board or school division not using Teach Virginia, I would certainly invite you to do that. Teach Virginia is powered by TeachersTeachers.com. It is a system that provides to school divisions many enhancements for the recruitment and notification to potential applicants, individuals who are interested in teaching. You can filter through the database, you can conduct searches, you can communicate with individuals who are interested in teaching. This is a wonderful tool for prospective teachers because it's free of charge to them. Now, this is not a free service, but we have funding and we have paid for the service for school divisions' use to try to help with the teacher shortage issue. Now, the Career Switcher Program that I promised you earlier, I would give you a little bit more information about. This was initially instituted as a pilot at Old Dominion University, and it was for individuals who had military service. It was soon expanded for all areas of career switchers, and then was even expanded to elementary education. It's an accelerated program for individuals who wish to switch careers, where the individual must complete all of his or her assessments prior to admission, and the individual will complete all the professional studies, get a one-year provisional license, and then seek employment in one of your divisions. The individual would then have to continue with seminars during the first year of employment and be successful in that first year of employment in order to get a five-year license. These are the four programs, ODU, Regent University, Shenandoah University, and Virginia Community College System. And they call their system Educate Virginia. So some people have trouble finding it, but it's Educate Virginia, Virginia Community College System. The Virginia Community College System has really grown its program. So if you're interested in finding teachers, certainly you want to communicate with institutions of higher ed preparing individuals through a traditional route, but you also want to engage in conversations with the Career Switcher Programs because they too are preparing individuals to teach. Regent University is an interesting program because theirs is an online program. Another program that is supported by the Virginia General Assembly is mentoring funding for the Career Switcher Program. Now, we have two mentoring programs, one for career switchers and one for new teachers. The Career Switcher Program, the funding has been about $280,000, where we can give the school system through a grant, $1,000 to help support the career switcher. Now, if we received more requests than we had career switchers, we would have to prorate that amount, but we have been able to provide the $1,000 for mentor support in the past Teacher residency programs. Teacher residency programs have really gained a lot of momentum nationally. It is very similar, not exactly the same, but very similar to the physician model, where you actually complete an internship and you're actually paid while you're doing it. You're not paid a teacher's salary, but you are paid a stipend, normally it's about $25,000, $26,000. It's a very research-based program that includes coaching. The individual would receive, at least in the programs that we have at Old Dominion University and Virginia Commonwealth University, those individuals will receive a master's degree during this teacher residency program. The General Assembly has appropriated funding, and ODU and VCU have both received grants for their programs. STEM. We do have a grant, and grants that are provided to school divisions, and the memo will probably be coming out pretty soon, and it's one of those first come, first served, with some conditions, because those individuals who are teaching in schools that are not accredited or hard-to-staff schools are given priority. But this has really gained a lot of momentum, and according to what we're hearing from some school divisions anecdotally, it has been successful as a recruitment tool for them. Now, this is a very specific grant for individuals who are teaching in the science, technology, engineering, or math areas, for individuals who are employed full-time, who are either new to the profession or who are being reassigned from a fully accredited school to one that's not accredited or to a hard-to-staff school. Now, how does this work? Successful teachers receive an initial bonus or incentive of $5,000. Bless you. There are certain conditions that have to be met, they have to have a satisfactory performance evaluation that year, and they have to teach all year. So we don't give the money upfront, it's given at the end of the school year, because there has to be a signed contract, they have to commit to coming back the next year, or they do not get the $5,000 at the end of the year. Those individuals have to have a five-year active Virginia teaching license, not a provisional, has to be a full license with one of the endorsements shown on the slide. They also will receive for up to three years, a $1,000 bonus each year, as long as they continue to teach in that STEM area, have to be satisfactory, have satisfactory performance, and they have to say they're coming back the following year to get the $1,000. So they get the money at the end of each of these years and can get a total of $8,000 in funding. The next initiative has been around for many, many, many years, and sort of dissolved for a period of time and then was re-instituted, and that's the Virginia Teaching Scholarship Loan Program. And this is to help students who are preparing to be teachers, they receive $10,000, it used to be a little over $3,000, and in the last couple of years, the General Assembly changed that because $3,000 wasn't a huge incentive for the funding. But now it's $10,000, and if you teach in a critical shortage area, you repay the loan by teaching. Some of you who have been teachers may have done that, that was very popular many years Since 1999, the General Assembly appropriated $558,000, but then they increased it in 2008, so we have a total of $708,000 to award each year. And as I mentioned, the recipient receives $10,000 per year. And when you're talking about that kind of money, it sounds like an awful lot of money to me. But when you start dividing it by 10,000, we don't have a large number of scholars But when you start dividing it by 10,000, we don't have a large number of scholarships to award. As you can see, in 2015, '16, we awarded 76. Now, individuals who are in a master's program who may not be going full-time, the amount is prorated based upon the number of hours that they are teaching. Now, you may have children or grandchildren, and you think, wow, I want them to apply for this. They don't apply directly to us. Those individual- well, the applications come to us, but the students actually show interest to the college or university dean or designee in the School of Education, because each year we have only a certain number of slots, and colleges and universities can recommend individuals. Those individuals are typically their best and brightest students, who may need financial assistance to complete their program. National Board Certification bonuses. I'm sure most of you know that National Board Certification is voluntary, it's not required in Virginia, but these are incentive bonuses for individuals to become nationally board-certified. And you can see the number of awards that were made in 2016, '17, and continuing bonuses of $2,500, 1,873, and initial bonuses of $5,057. The number of initial bonuses has declined in the last couple of years, is going to really soar, because the decline was because the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards revised its process. So during this process, the number declined, but it will go back up. But the General Assembly has been very generous to fund those bonuses for our teachers. The Mentor Teacher Program, the General Assembly has authorized the use of $1 million a year for funding to support mentor teacher programs. Again, that's a lot of money. But when we divide the number of new teachers, of the million dollars that we have, it's only about $200 and some dollars per teacher that a school division gets to help with the mentoring program, which is a huge contrast to what school divisions get for Career Switcher Programs. So we're very careful to analyze the data. So if school divisions submit under this grant but have a career switcher, we call and say you might want to move them over to the Career Switcher Program, Mentoring Program, because they receive more funding. Clinical Faculty Programs. Colleges and universities send proposals each year to the Department of Education. I believe it's over $300,000 that we grant to colleges and universities to help support those cooperating teachers in public schools. They also receive generally some privileges at the college or university as clinical faculty at the institution. Sometimes they get library privileges and other professional development opportunities at the college and universities through these grants. Each year, the General Assembly also awards us $600,000 of funding for competitive grants for special education personnel traineeships. These traineeships go to colleges and universities to help support their programs, so that individuals who have provisional licenses in special education can meet the remaining requirements that they need to get for a four license in Virginia. Now, I have questions, but before, if you have questions, you can certainly send them to me, but I do want to talk just a little bit about some of the areas that we've had internal discussion at the Department of Education, as well as with colleagues, about how we can help school divisions address the critical shortage areas. One area is with our new approved program regulations, whether or not new yet, but we're hoping that they'll be approved soon. They too are, along with our licensure regulations, are in the Administrative Process Act review. But once they become approved, colleges and universities will no longer be subjected to what we call a cap on professional studies. In the 1990s, the Board of Education, there was a big national movement to go to graduate programs, and the Board of Education included in its regulations a cap or a limit on the number of professional studies requirements that could be offered in an undergraduate program. Colleges and universities were offering many, and most of their programs at the graduate level around that time when they were changing their programs, and we have been sending the message that we are very receptive to four-year programs. Colleges and universities, tuition is very expensive now, and we are hearing that individuals who would like to go into teaching said that they would if they could do it in four years versus five, and many of the colleges and universities now have undergraduate programs, and I think that that will continue to increase with the limit on the professional studies being removed. What that really means is that colleges and universities can develop their program within the competencies and the regulations, and they're not restricted in the number of professional studies hours that they can provide. Also, there's been discussion about tuition discounts. Some colleges and universities do offer those, and we need to continue to explore that. We are continuing to look at articulation agreements between two-year community colleges and four-year institutions. That has been a matter of discussion for some years, because there are some programs that individuals complete at the community college that do not transfer to a four-year institution, so we need to strengthen those ties between the community college and the four-year institutions. We also need to look at the possibility of summer institutes to provide summer offerings to help individuals prepare to teach in the fall, very similar to what we're doing with the Radford University Course. We can see that that had a huge number of individuals who were interested, and so some type of summer institutes. Increasing scholarships for students. And students now, I'm preaching to the choir, but they come out of college and university with huge debt, and it's very difficult for them to pay that off. So scholarships. We need to do more to support teachers in preparing for our assessments, for licensure assessments, not only preparing those individuals who have provisional licenses, who want a five-year license and need to pass those assessments, but also for those individuals who want to add by testing. The community college, Educate Virginia, is up to the plate, and they have a program for the ESL, and they are gaining much success with individuals passing that who want to add it to their license. We also need more incentives to teach math and science. It's really interesting, even though special ed is the most acute area, and certainly the area in which we are trying to focus much of our attention because we need teachers who are prepared, mathematics, even though it's not the top, is of concern for all students, that they have a properly-prepared mathematics teacher in the classroom. We also need to look at Grow Your Own Programs and share ideas that we're having among ourselves about how you're growing your own, individuals in the community, who are rooted in the community, who are going to stay there, how to help them become teachers. There also needs to be some programs, and we're having discussions about this in the Department of Education, on the professional studies requirements. Some of you may know, some of you may not know, that the current licensure regulations for school personnel indicate that a school division may submit a plan, an alternate plan, for individuals to meet the professional studies requirements. So we are really having conversations internally at the Department of Education, and will certainly need help from school divisions about how to develop a model program that school divisions could offer perhaps on-site for individuals to meet the professional studies requirements, instead of necessarily having to meet all of it through collegiate work. Now, some school divisions have done some of this, not very many, I can count on one hand how many have done it, because it is difficult when you don't have a model program, you don't really know how to deliver that or what that program would look like. So we're really talking about how we can help you to perhaps do some professional development within your school division that could perhaps meet some or all of the professional studies requirements for your provisionally-licensed teachers. Works very well with teachers who are getting a technical professional license, because they only need non-semester hours of professional studies, which could be delivered in a different way than perhaps going to a college or university and taking those non-semester hours of coursework. Now, that plan has to be approved by the Department of Education. It's not something that you can do without that approval, but that is something that we have been thinking and talking about, and would appreciate your input. Our time is just about ending for this part of the presentation, but I do want to say that if you have specific concerns or questions, I have certainly invited superintendents, because we rotate and go to all of the regions, to please communicate with me if you have an individual who you are very interested in employing and/or helping. Sometimes there's somebody in the community and you want to help, and you want some guidance on how to perhaps guide them. Perhaps it's someone who might want to become a teacher, and you need to know more about experiential learning route, or you need to learn more about how the provisional route works. Please don't hesitate to let us know. The division's superintendents sort of have my hotline number, so they can certainly give me a call, and you can as well. We certainly want to help you. We know it's a real challenge, and we want to work collaboratively. If you have ideas that you would like for us to consider as we move forward with the shortage areas, please do not hesitate to let me know. We would be very interested in any of your ideas. So thanks again to the Virginia School Board Association for inviting me. It's always a pleasure for me to be here with you, and again, call me if there's anything that Dr. Staples or I can do to assist you. Thank you very much.
I think back to the fall of 2008, when the stock market started to drop, and by March of 2009, it had dropped 40%. Corporate America was laying off employees like crazy. Tax revenues were falling precipitously. Boards of supervisors were looking at budgets that were going to be far less than what they had historically funded, and they were telling school boards that you've got to cut your budget substantially for the 2009, 2010 school year. My phone started ringing off the hook from school superintendents and school board chairs saying, how do we do that? Most of them didn't even know that they had a reduction in force policy, because none of them had ever had to look at it before. School employment had grown every year for virtually every school district around the state for decades, and so even though there were policies in the policy book about if you do a reduction in force, here's how you do it, nobody had looked at those policies, if at all, they hadn't looked at them since they passed them. And quite frankly, in most cases, they were really out of date and weren't appropriate for the type of cuts that were being made, which in many cases were really substantial. I had, in the private sector, which is, I also do a lot of employment law for private sector clients, in the private sector, I've been dealing with reductions in force for years. It just, every business cycle, when business is good, everybody's hiring, when business is bad, everybody's laying off, and business is good and business is bad on fairly predictable cycles. And about every four years, you're counseling clients on hiring practices, and then four years later, you're counseling clients on layoff practices. So the concept of how you do a reduction in force wasn't anything that was new, but the context of doing it in the education world and in the public sector was significantly new, and we learned a lot of lessons during that period of time. In most parts of the state, of course, we've had a significant economic rebound, hiring has been back up, we're not having to deal with this, but I know that in southwest Virginia, there are areas where enrollment continues to drop, tax revenues continue to drop, and your ability to fund, you know, your biggest cost is always personnel in any, whether you're a school district or Dominion Power or anybody else, you know, whatever you do, your biggest cost is going to be personnel. And so when you have these continued economic stresses, you look at personnel first to say, how are we going to balance our budget? So we're going to spend the next few minutes going through the basics of how you do a reduction in force, what are the best practices for doing reductions in force in general, and specifically, what does Virginia law say that is helpful or not helpful in terms of reductions in force? And one of the things I think you will find, to probably to your pleasant surprise, is that you have more flexibility in making employment decisions in a situation where your funding and your enrollment is dropping than you probably realize. The General Assembly has always permitted school boards a reasonable amount of flexibility in making employment decisions, where the driver is either money or the number of students. So let's look at some issues. Okay, well, first of all, just basic principles. Why do we do reductions in force? Because we have to reduce cost, and we want to make sure that we accomplish the cost reductions in the best ways. We can look at salary and benefit reductions, that's one way to reduce cost. You can furlough employees, that's another way to reduce cost. You can do paid time off, which is another way to reduce cost, or reduced work schedules. So in Virginia Code Section 22.1-304, it says, "A school board may reduce the number of teachers, whether or not such teachers have reached continuing contract status because of a decrease in enrollment or abolition of particular subjects." Now, there are a couple of things about that code section that I want to bring to your attention and that we'll talk about. First of all, what are the situations where you can engage in RIF practices? Well, they are when you have a decrease in enrollment, so that decrease in enrollment can either be overall in your school system, or it could be specific to a program, where you have a particular program where your enrollment's been dropping, or abolition of subjects. So sometimes you add new subjects, and sometimes you drop subjects because they're undersubscribed, and there's just not enough interest to offer them. But when you do that, notice that it says, "Whether or not such teachers have reached continuing contract status." As important as continuing contract, or what in shorthand you might call tenure, as much power as a tenure teacher has, that power is gone in these contexts. And if you have a second-year probationary teacher and a ten-year continuing contract teacher, and you have declining enrollment in a program, and you need to eliminate one of those two positions, you can eliminate either one. You don't have to eliminate the probationary teacher, unless, and we'll talk about this more in a minute, but unless your policy says that you will eliminate based on tenure, based on how long somebody's been employed, longevity. And when I use the word tenure in that context, I mean, how long have you been an employee? So some of your policies say that the first factor you'll look at is tenure. I have long argued that that's a holdover from a union world, where the longer you stay employed, the stay employed, the more job security you have, but, but there is no reason, there's nothing in Virginia law that requires it, there's no reason to do it, and I don't think it's a best practice when you're trying to maximize the effectiveness of your school district to say, "We're just going to do, make all these decisions based on how long somebody's been employed," not how effective they are in the classroom. That second-year teacher may be killing it, and that tenth-year teacher may be just checking in every day, mailing it in. And so, why would you keep the ten-year teacher just because they've been there 10 years? But that's what school districts were doing. And so, one of the things we tried to do is change the culture, because what you'll find outside of a union context, and of course, Virginia's mostly a non-union employer, most non-union employers wouldn't consider using tenure as the primary factor. They want the best workforce they can get, they want the most value for their dollar in terms of their personnel costs. And so, we need to think, we need to take away from that model some best practices about dealing with these personnel costs. Virginia Code Section 22.1-304 also says, "Nothing in the continuing contract shall be construed to authorize a school board to contract for any financial obligation beyond the period for which funds have been available with which to meet such obligations." In other words, when the board of supervisors appropriates to you a certain amount of money, you can spend that money on your personnel as within, you know, as your other categories, but you are never obligated to spend more than that. So, if you get to March, and the board of supervisors said, "We simply don't have the money to make the last appropriation for the year," if they're doing it on a periodic basis, you're going to get 80 percent of the money, well, you don't have to pay your employees 100 percent of their salary when you're only getting 80 percent of the money, because of this code section. And if you look at your teacher contracts, particularly if you're using the standard VSBA form-type contract, this says right in there, this language is lifted out of the code and placed into the form contract, so that the teachers are reminded when they sign their contract that they don't have an expectation of payment if the money's not available. So, "School boards must notify teachers who may be subject to layoff due to a decrease in the board's budget within two weeks of approval of the budget by the appropriating body or July 1, whichever is earlier." Now, you would think it would be whichever is later, because what you could end out with is a situation where the appropriating body, the board of supervisors or city council, whatever, you know, you're getting to July 1, and you don't know how much money you're going to have yet, because they haven't told you, they haven't approved your budget or not. And this happened a few years ago, three or four years ago, if you recall, the General Assembly wasn't telling the localities how much money there was going to be, and so the localities wouldn't approve the budgets, so all the school boards were in a bit of a panic at the end of June, saying, "We, you know, we haven't sent out contracts yet, we haven't approved the budget yet." And what, they had to basically put all their teachers on notice, because of this code section, that you may not have a job next year. So, we just sent the notices to everybody, because there was no other alternative. But in a situation where, that's more normal, where you have your budget by April, May time period, then you've got two weeks during which to notify anybody who would be subject to layoff due to a decrease in budget, if that's the reason. Now, you could have other reasons to lay them off, but if it's because of budget, you've got a two-week window to send those notices out. And if you don't send the notice out, then with continuing contract teachers, they have an expectation of continued employment. So, other than the notice provision, the code and the regulations are silent as to the procedures. There's no layoff or reduction in force procedure that's set forth in the Board of Education regulations. So, school boards are free to develop their own procedures, you can do, you can do this however you want, and the procedures are generally set out in your policy and in the regulations that enact that policy. So, we want to review and update and know and follow our policies. So, how do we do an effective RIF, if you're going to do a reduction in force? Well, first of all, you identify what are your objectives, what it is, what is it that you're trying to accomplish? Are you trying to accomplish an overall reduction in the number of employees? Are you trying to accomplish a reduction within certain programs or within certain schools? What is it that you're trying to accomplish? And then you look at budget realities, how much money do you have? What do you have to work with? And not only for the next year, but for this year, because you may want to spend some money this year to incentivize some people to go ahead and retire or to leave, to pay them some money to do that, so that you can reduce by attrition perhaps your numbers in ways that you wouldn't be able to otherwise. I mean, if somebody's a year away from retirement, but they have enough years in, you know, they've got their 30 years, and they're thinking, "I'm going to retire next year," and you offer to pay them three or four months' salary if they go ahead and retire now, and they're thinking, "Wow, I can get a three or four months' paid vacation and benefits, and I don't have to do anything, I'll go ahead and retire." Well, so you've accomplished, out of this year's budget, a really important goal of reducing the number of staff, and you've done it in a way that you've mitigated your risk. And then a really important question, the residual effect, what is your workforce going to look like after the downsizing is eliminated? If I was looking at the private sector, and I've got a, let's say we've got a client that's a, that's making cell phones, okay? And in order to make cell phones, you're going to have all kinds of different employees, but one thing you're going to have is an engineering department, you're going to have a research and development department, and you're going to have a software department that does all the, builds all the software. And if you, if you just say, "Well, we need to reduce X number of dollars, and the X number of dollars is going to come out of the engineering, and so we eliminate most of our engineering positions," well, that's fine, we just cut our costs, but we've also cut our ability to have any kind of a future, because we just eliminated the ideas that would lead to the next generation of cell phones and would leave us a nimble, competitive force in the market. And the same concept would apply in a school district. You could say, "Well, we're going to protect the older teachers and, and lay off the younger teachers, you know, we're going to do it in a tenure system," but if you do that, you're cutting off your future, and some of those younger teachers could be coaches, they could be the activity directors, they could be involved in other activities that now you're going to have to cover. You know, you just, you'd lay the teacher off, but were you looking at the other things that teacher does in addition to just classroom teaching that has value to your school district? And how are you going to cover those things? And will you be as strong or even stronger district after the downsizing? And then, of course, what, what do you need? What are the skills, the abilities, the talents, the, again, this coverage that you have to have? What do you need to run your school district? You want to think about these things before you start even thinking about people and numbers and stuff like that. You need to start conceptualizing what you want your school district to look like. So, so you analyze your workforce, you start to think about what does your workforce look like, all right? So, one of the things you want to take a look at is what certifications do you have? Who are your highly qualified teachers? What are people endorsed in? One teacher may be endorsed in three or four areas. She may be an English teacher, but she may also be endorsed in some other things. And that teacher may have more value to you, because you can put her in more different types of classroom settings than somebody who's just endorsed in one thing, and that's all they can do. So, you need to sort of build out a matrix of that. What has been the person's experience, both in the, in the district and overall? Tenure, of course, you want to look at that, I'm not, I'm not suggesting by anything I say that tenure's not important, I just think it tends to be overweighted, it needs to be A factor, not D factor. Extracurricular activities, what are they involved in, and what do they have the talents and ability to be involved in? Maybe they don't do something now, but they could be doing it. What about diversity elements? You know, you always need to be thinking about age, race, gender, those things, disability, because if you start laying off, you know, one of, the whole reason for the Age Discrimination in Employment Act is that 25, 30 years ago, private sector companies would typically say, "Well, the best way to reduce cost in manufacturing is we'll just lay everybody off that's over 50," you know? Because not only are they older and they are perceived to not be as fast as the younger employees, but they're the most expensive, because they've been there long enough. So, if you really want to impact your company, just lay off all the older people. And so, the older people all complained to their congressman, and Congress passed a law, the Age Discrimination in Employment Act, that says, "You can't do that. You can't make these decisions based on age, or factors that would impact in an adverse way, age." So, you've got to pay attention to factors like that. You may have been having in your school district some affirmative action initiatives, and you might have been very successful in attracting some minority teachers into your school district. If you go on a, again, on a tenure basis, last in, first out, what we call LIFO, if you use that, then what's going to happen to all those minority teachers that you've hired? You're going to lose them, you're going to lay them off. So, the thing that you have been investing in growing, you're just going to end up cutting off, because you use a blunt instrument instead of a nuanced instrument to make your decision. And then special skills, you know, people that have language abilities, bookkeeping abilities, maybe somebody has nursing experience or EMT certification, you know, there are lots of things that people bring to the workplace that are helpful, and you want, and you don't want to just ignore those skills and abilities. And then always look at performance evaluations. It's always interesting to me that we get into these situations and we start saying, "Well, okay, we're going to lay off the teachers with the lowest performance evaluations." Now, that, in and of itself, there's merit to thinking that way, because it's, it would be the way, you know, Jack Welsh, when he ran GE, said, "If you lay, if you eliminate the worst 5 percent of performers in your business every year for 20 years, you will be a much stronger business at the end of the 20 years." But that only works if the performance evaluation system has actually identified the worst performers. What happens in a school system? In a school system, some principals give really easy performance evaluations, they don't really hold their teachers accountable. Other principals really push hard, they use the performance evaluation to try to motivate their teachers to be the best they can be. So, if you use the performance evaluation number as a raw number without having more information, what have you just done? You may have eliminated some of the best teachers in your district, and you may have retained some of the worst teachers in your district, because you used an uninformed instrument in an, or maybe an informed instrument, but you used it in an uninformed way. So, after you've analyzed your workforce, you want to develop your plan. You want to envision what your new workforce is going to look like. What is the best post-downsizing workforce you can create? And one of the ways you can do this is don't be afraid to get input from your existing employees, they may, now, they're going to have agendas, they're going to be looking at, "How does all of this fit me?" But if you get enough people involved in having input, you kind of neutralize that. If you have younger and older employees and minority and non-minority employees and male and female employees, you get all that in the mix, it kind of neutralizes those factors. You've got to be, you know, as we said, seniority, tenure, is the easy way to do it, but it's not the best way. And you want to make seniority a factor, but not the trump factor, not the one that, you know, really decides the question. You want to know the law, so your, your non-tenured staff can be released simply by appropriate and timely notices, you know that. If you don't have, if you're a probationary teacher, as long as you give them notice by June 15 that they're not going to have a job next year, you don't have to have them back. So, it's really easy to give the notices required to eliminate the positions of non-tenure teachers. But, having said that, some of those non-tenure teachers may be really strong teachers, and so while it's easy to give the notice, it's not necessarily easy to replace the teacher. Virginia law does not give preferences to continuing, continuing contract teachers in RIF situations. So, you can lay off the continuing contract teacher. I handled a case for a school board in the Valley a few years ago, where they had three band directors who worked with both the high school and the middle school, and enrollment in the band program had been declining. And they knew that one of the reasons enrollment in the band program had been declining is that their oldest band director, who had the most seniority, the longest tenure, was just not creating any excitement anymore. The kids didn't want to take band, because they didn't want to be working with him, and they had a young band director, they'd just hired out of JMU, which has a strong music program, and he was doing great and creating a lot of excitement, and kids, there were kids that would go into his program, but as soon as it was time to go into the other program, they'd drop out again, so they couldn't build the band, and it was just not a good situation. And so, they called me and said, "What do we do?" And I said, "You've got declining enrollment in a program, you can, you can just simply lay off, under this code section, you can lay off the band director who has continuing contract and the most seniority, but is not being effective." And so, they did, and they got the band program they wanted. Now, he sued, but the court, the local court ruled that we were right, that we had the power to do it, and then he appealed that decision to the Virginia Supreme Court, and Virginia Supreme Court said the school board was right, they had the power to do it, as they did also in a case in Henry County, the Underwood versus Henry County School Board case. So, on at least two occasions, the Henry County case and the case I handled, we know that the Virginia Supreme Court says that you can do this, you've got legal coverage when you eliminate a continuing contract teacher in a declining enrollment context. You can select your employees using objective criteria as much as possible. The more you are subjective, the more you just ask a principal, "Who are the strongest people, who are the weakest people in your school?" They're going to take care of their favorite people, okay? That's just human nature, and you don't need that, because that's just going to lead to all kinds of problems, both legal and morale. So, what you need to do is come, what I generally advocate, is come up with kind of a grid-type system, where, let's say, we want to look at all the English teachers at the high school, so we put their names down the left-hand side, and then across the top of the grid, we put the various factors that we identify, that we can have some objective use for. So, we look at their seniority, we look at their, at their qualifications, we look at their certifications, we look at their other activities they engage in, we look at whether they're minority or not, and we weight all of that with a numerical weighting. We assign a number to each of those categories, and then we come down to the bottom and add all those numbers up and see which, or I guess going across, since teachers are on the, this axis, we go across, and we look at the number at the end, and we say, "Okay, who has the highest number, who has the lowest number?" And presumably, the one with the lowest number would be the one that you would eliminate. But you're eliminating that person not based on any one of those factors, but based on a conglomeration of all of those factors. And, and you can do that on a department-by-department or school-by-school basis, and it's pretty effective. You want to use a performance appraisals, although, again, it's one factor, not the factor, it's A factor. And, and you know, we're always trying to put kids first, I mean, that ought to be the driver here, is which teachers are most effective in educating our children, that's what we're after. And then, of course, we want to reduce the risk of discrimination claims, that's your biggest legal risk, is that you do it in a way that impacts minorities or older employees or some other protected class. So, one of the ways you can mitigate legal risk is by thinking about exit incentives and releases, and this is something you would need to do in a current year, not wait for the following year, because if, if, let's say you're offering an early retirement incentive, so you're going to offer some money now to retire later, or to retire, you're going to offer money now to retire on June 30, and maybe you'll offer money over two or three years, I mean, some of these plans go out as far as five years. Now, my experience has been, when you have really rich incentives that go out over four or five years, you end up creating a real financial burden on your district. I don't like those programs, we've eliminated them in some districts, and we've been sued when we eliminated them, and we've won the lawsuits, but it's still a cost to be engaged in litigation. And so, you want to make the incentives as much, "We pay you now, we're done, we move on," as possible, it's, it's better for your, the long-term financial health of your district. One of the things you can offer, people don't think about this, but it's really helpful, particularly to people that are going to get laid off anyway, I mean, is to offer outsourcing assistance. You can hire, you know, a, a job-finding firm to work with the people that get laid off to help them find other jobs in other places, because a lot of people, they don't, they don't have the skills, the connections, the network to go find another job. If they find another job, they're far less likely to try to bring some legal claim against you, so you want to help them get employed. It doesn't cost a lot to pay for a job placement firm to work with somebody, it might cost you $3,000 to $8,000 per employee, depending on how much, you know, how high a salary level the person's in, but this is not expensive, and, and you've done a really nice service for somebody. You've laid them off, but you said, "But we still got your back, and we're going to try to help you land someplace else." And there are other parts of the state or, or other states where- And there are other parts of the state or other states where there are jobs available, and they just need to identify them. And then, you know, you want to think about recall rights, all right? If you lay off somebody now because of your budget, but then somebody else in the fall unexpectedly leaves the district, you know, people leave in the fall for all kinds of different reasons, health reasons, pregnancy, family moves, you know, a husband or wife gets transferred and then the spouse wants to go with them. People leave during the year. So, who are you going to put back in that position when somebody leaves unexpectedly? Well, if you have a system in your policy that allows you to recall the laid-off employees, then it also gives them a little bit of a safety net. They may see the benefit of sticking around because they have an opportunity to be recalled. And also, because of the recall rights, it means that you don't have to go through the whole advertising and interviewing process. You just recall that employee and the job is filled the next day. It saves you time and money. So, recall rights can be really helpful to you and the employee. You want to be careful about discrimination claims. So, when the discrimination is alleged in the context of a RIF, the plaintiff has to prove that he was a member of a protected class, so, you know, age, race, sex, disability, those classes, so that he was a member of the class or she, that he or she was performing to the employer's legitimate expectations, all right? How do you prove that? Performance evaluations. Unless the performance evaluations were awful, the teacher's going to say, "Look, everything in my performance evaluation said I was meeting expectations." So, that's all they need to prove that they were performing up to expectations. Three, that he or she was terminated, that's easy to prove, right? They're not employed. And that a similarly situated employee outside the protected class was treated more favorably. So, "I'm a third-year social studies teacher at the middle school, and I'm a minority, and a third-year non-minority social studies teacher at the middle school was retained," all right? So, the only difference between that person and me is I'm a minority and they're not. That's an easy case to get to a jury and create a legal risk for you. So, the protected classes are if you're female, if you're in a racial minority, if you're a foreign national, which is becoming far more common than it was even 20 years ago, that you're a religious minority, somebody may be practicing a non-mainstream religion, over 40 is your age group, or has some sort of disability. What are the legitimate expectations? Where do you go to measure that second prong, that "I was meeting the legitimate expectations of my employer"? Well, you look at the evaluation scores, as I said. You look at seniority. If the person's been employed by you for five years and you never terminated them, then how can you say they weren't meeting your legitimate expectations? If they weren't meeting your legitimate expectations, you should have fired them a long time ago. So, the longer they work for you, the easier it is for a judge to say, "He or she must have been meeting your legitimate expectations." And then, again, continued employment. In a termination situation, any kind of termination is going to qualify, whether it's a layoff or a RIF, or even a significant demotion. Maybe you've got a, let's go out of the teacher situation for a minute. Let's talk about your director of transportation that you reduced to a mechanic. And you say, "Well, we'll just operate without a director of transportation. We'll do the bus scheduling in the central office, and we'll just make all the people in the bus garage mechanics." That's a significant demotion, and that person could have a claim if that person is in a protected class. And then, of course, anytime you non-renew a contract, that's a termination. And while you have the right to non-renew particularly annual contracts, you have the right to do that, you can't do it in a way that's discriminatory. So, who are the similarly situated employees? Well, we call them, in the law, we call them comparators. I can compare myself to somebody else. So, we look at evaluations, and the question is, you know, is it apples versus oranges? Who was the evaluator? If the evaluator's an easy evaluator and gave you high marks, and the evaluator's a hard evaluator and gave me low marks, then we've got to adjust for that. So, you do a lot of statistics when you look at similarly situated employees, and you look at the relevant characteristics, you know, what is necessary to hold this position? So, when we're trying to assess the risk of a discrimination claim, when you're looking at a reduction in force and you're saying, "What is my risk of being sued or going to the EEOC or something like that?", then you always want to do an analysis. You want to do a, you've got your grid that you use to make your decision. Now, you want to take the layoff group, and you want to run them through a different kind of grid. And you want to analyze the age, the race, the sex, the disability status, and other EEO categories of that potential layoff group. And so, and then you've got to be careful if somebody's pregnant. You may not have thought of them in a minority status, but there's a Pregnancy Discrimination Act that gives them coverage. Maybe they're caring for newborns or sick family members or something like that. They're going to be covered by FMLA, right? The Family Medical Leave Act. So, maybe they're not in any of these categories, but they have federal employment rights protection because of FMLA. And then there's workers' comp. So, there's all these things that are going on that you don't want to forget about. And so, somebody's got to sit down and look at that group and say, "Who on this group is a potential plaintiff in some kind of a lawsuit arising out of the rights that that person has, independent of just the contract rights or statutory rights?" So, we want to structure our reduction in force in such a way as to avoid the appearance that employees in the protected group were targeted, okay? We're trying to pay careful attention to that. So, we look at, and so, one of the things you want to look at are their endorsements, coaching assignments, and things like that, that may be, even though you may have two people who perform the same way in the classroom, they both have similar evaluation scores and all that, maybe one of them is the head football coach and one of them doesn't engage in any activities, all right? That would be a legitimate basis to say they're really not comparators. It's not apples and apples, it's apples and oranges because of this other factor. And so, you also might want to have a downsizing committee to help you identify, and maybe in each school or each department or something like that, to help you make these determinations. You want to have a plan. You don't just go about doing this without a plan. So, you want to provide a justification for the layoff. Why is it that you're doing it? Is it reduction in money? Is it reduction in numbers of students in the schools? Is it reduction in number of students in the program? You know, what is the rationale? And then, what is the extent of the layoff? Are we going to lay off one person, three people, five people, 20 people? And who are we going to impact? What schools, departments, whatever? You want to think that through. And then you want to have the process, and the process is what we've been talking about. But you've got to build a process to get to the outcome that you want. You want an internal review procedure for termination decisions and employee complaints to make sure that you're not missing something that you could resolve internally. You want to have a severance pay program, maybe in exchange for a waiver of rights. If you think there's a discrimination, potential discrimination issue, it might be worth paying some money to that employee to get a release of claims, a waiver. So, if you get an EEOC charge and you end up in Richmond talking to the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, you're probably going to end up writing a check there. So, you might as well write it on the front end and mitigate your risk as opposed to waiting until you've got an EEOC charge. And you want an appropriate form to do that, and they don't have to be complicated, but they've got to hit all the right things. And then you want to think about, again, you want to think about recall rights because I think that can be really helpful. So, in terms of what are the objectives criteria, well, obviously, seniority's objective, it's just a number. Job elimination, that's objective. If I'm eliminating your job and I'm laying you off for that reason, it has nothing to do with your performance, we just don't need the job anymore. And then, of course, compensation level is objective. If one person's making $50,000 and another person's making $40,000, that differential is an objective differential. Subjective criteria, where you can't just say it's the number, include things like evaluations, performance, the quote, "importance" to the school district or the school, and their future potential. This person's really a strong performer and we think is going to be a leader in our district. But these are all subjective determinations. And so, whenever you're dealing in the subjective area, you've got to realize that there's more risk of claims than when you're dealing in the objective area. And unfortunately, it's why people sometimes default to the seniority system, is because it's really easy to say it didn't have anything to do with any factor other than seniority. It couldn't possibly have been because of race, or because of sex, or because of disability. It just hadn't been here as long as the other people. But to me, that's not the courageous way to do it, it's just the most legal risk-averse way to do it, and I think we can do better. If the selection process involves evaluating an employee's performance, you want to make sure that you have criteria based on the job description. That's pretty easy to do in the teacher context because you've already got state-approved evaluation forms, but in your instructional aids and secretaries and bus drivers and bus mechanics, you know, how good are your evaluation systems for those employees if you start laying them off? You want to make sure that your administrators and supervisors are trained in these evaluations so that they are as objective and consistent as possible. It's not going to be perfect, but you can make it better. And then, you want to make sure that your evaluations, your performance-based downsizing evaluations are subjected to several layers of review so that you make sure that you don't just have a principal protecting his or her favorite people as opposed to truly identifying who are the best performers, which means you need other people looking at those evaluations. You want to do a disparate impact analysis. If I lay off the 20 most expensive people in my school system, that's purely objective, right? If I lay off the 20 most expensive teachers, that's purely objective. But if I subject that number to what's called a disparate impact analysis, who is going to be impacted by that decision? Older workers, right? Just by definition. So, it's going to have a disparate impact on the protected category of people over 40. You just handed them a lawsuit against you for age discrimination. Even though you say the factor wasn't age, it was money, because you used a factor where age and money are related, it has the same impact as if you had just said, "We're going to lay off everybody who's over 55." So, you've got to be careful, and you've got to look at other EEO criteria as well. And then, again, the best way to mitigate your risk is with releases and waivers and some money on the way out. Furloughs, state law does allow you to furlough during the year if you get into a funding shortfall situation where, you know, you had a budget, it was an approved budget, you're cranking along, operating, and then all of a sudden, the board of supervisors or the state or somebody who's a funding source says, "That money's not going to be there in the quantity that we thought it was. We can't appropriate it because we don't have it." And you need to, all of a sudden, make some adjustments. One way you can make adjustments is furloughs, where you basically close the schools for a few days. And you can do that for up to 10 days, even with the teacher contracts, because the state contract allows up to 10 days of non-instructional time, and so, that's a possibility. So, that's out of the regulations of the Virginia Board of Education, 20-440, says, "School boards shall not be obligated to contractual salary terms unless and until sufficient funds are approved by the appropriating body." So, even though you have a contract with the teacher that says you're going to pay them X, you're not obligated to that contract if the money doesn't actually come from the appropriating body, all right? That's an important thing to understand, is the contract doesn't control in the situation where the money's not there. Now, if you get categorical as opposed to non-categorical appropriation, then you've got to look specifically at the personnel number. Doesn't matter whether they appropriated enough for transportation or not. The question is, did they appropriate enough for personnel? And if they didn't, then you're not bound by the contract. So, you can, a temporary furlough could be up to a contract year, if it's an entire year. You could furlough people and say, "We'll call you back in a year." Furloughs on teachers, like during the year, cannot exceed 10 days. That's because of 8 VAC 244020 says that up to 10 days of the 10-month, 200-day contract may be, quote, "Activities may be assigned or approved by the local school board." So, the activity could be a 10-day furlough. And there's a superintendent's memo, 20210, from August 2010, that specifically explained that. Again, notice the date of that. That was, everybody in the state was asking in 2010, "What do we do? We don't have enough money." And so, some of the superintendent's memos from that period of time are really helpful to look back to because they explain some of your rights and expectations. So, that's just a kind of overview to go through reductions in force and how to do them in a legal way and in a constructive way to build a better school system. Be glad to take any questions or comments or anything that anybody has. Then, thank you very much. As always, it's a great pleasure to be here and good to see everybody.
Thanks again, Craig. I would now like to introduce our final speaker, David Brooks, Deputy Administrator with VACOR, who is here to discuss the importance of school board support when it comes to risk management.
I'm going to get crazy and pull this mic off of here. All right. Is it still afternoon? I think we might be a little early, or it's just now afternoon. Good to see you, everybody. Appreciate you allowing me to come in and present to you all on risk management and support for, and support for risk management. I, I'm going to, I was, I'm going to start with a little bit of a different introduction. Just got an email a minute ago because this goes beyond data, and it's something that you all deal with. We know you deal with it. It's always very difficult, but I just got one out of a school, and it appears that one of our school vehicles was in a collision yesterday with another vehicle. And we had a driver of our vehicle with two special needs students who didn't go home last night, and, you know, we injured, so we had that deal. We've got two special needs kids injured, and we've got a mom and four of her kids in the other vehicle that are injured. And, you know, it's a tough auto accident. It's just a brutal deal. And, you know, we see those, and we see injuries to employees. We see them to your teachers, to your students, to members in the community. And that pretty much gets to the heart of the matter when we talk about safety and risk management. And, you know, I just, I hate to start with something like that because I usually like to try to be a little more funny and tell you a good story. And I'm going to tell you some stuff, I'm going to show you some things. But with all of that, y'all, we've got 100 school divisions across Virginia insured, and I believe we've got just about everybody in the room. So, that means we've got your property, we insure your buildings, we insure your buses, we insure all your workers' comp. And when these injuries and these lawsuits or these claims come in, you know, the benefit of what we are able to do with that is we're able to take all of that data and crunch it up and put it into pie charts and graphs and things like that. And some of y'all have got the copy of my presentation. And what I'm going to be able to, what I want to do with that is share with you all of that data from across the state so that, one, you know what's going on, you know where we're seeing our injuries, you know where we're seeing claims, but you also, I want you to know where we're coming from when we come into your schools and do training. I want you to know why our risk control guys are trying to come in and train all your bus drivers and train your custodians and your maintenance and your food service and your teachers, and some of the reasons that we come in and do that. Also, another benefit, you know, for this, for purposes of this meeting, is for the superintendents and the school boards, I want you to think about the possibility of having a presentation like this for your principals or at your administrative retreats this summer. So, whenever you're bringing your administrators, if what you see in this presentation you feel is important to share with them, to educate them on things that they need to be aware of, where are injuries? Where are lawsuits? Where are things that we need to pay attention to so that we don't have claims that affect our insurance costs or, you know, really at the heart of the matter, trying to get our folks home at the end of the day? And that's really what safety and risk management's all about. So, basically, what we do and what we use to identify all of this stuff is we look at your loss ratios, we look at your experience mods, we look at departmental injury statistics on where all of these claims- We look at departmental injury statistics on where all of these claims are coming from. And what we do is we collect all of that data. Your employees, when they get hurt, they call company nurse. Or your finance folks or your folks submit claims through the website and they come to us. Our adjusters deal with them. Your auto accidents come through your transportation departments through the websites to VACOR or VML or whoever your insurers are. And we collect it. We process it. We reach out. Our adjusters are out there. If we have a fire in a school, we're usually on the ground the next day. Whoever that insurer is, they're out there trying to help mitigate. Or in the event of a bad auto accident or a bus accident, we usually have people, folks have people on the ground to try to, try to make sure that it goes as smooth as possible. We try to clean up the data. We model it. And then we communicate it in ways such as this at these types of presentations, whether that's at a school board or a school superintendent conference or risk management conferences. And, you know, we're able to talk about what we're seeing so that you all know what's going on around the state and it's not just in your local school divisions. The first thing that I did was I took all of our workers' compensation information over a little more than a 10-year stretch. And this information basically comes out of roughly 75 to 80 school divisions across Virginia. Just about, you know, the whole stretch go, I mean, we're from Lee County to Arlington County to Norfolk Portsmouth and all the way down through the south side and the central part of the state. I mean, this information's coming from a whole host of school divisions across the state. And what we see is that in our school divisions, our instructional injuries are leading the way. We've handled 25,000 injuries to teachers in the Commonwealth of Virginia over the last 10 years or so. So what that tells me is that I'm going to have 2,500 injuries to teachers this year. We know that teachers are having these injuries. What I think is important and another thing that I want to point out here is that of these 24,000 injuries, I believe 3,000 of them have occurred in special education. I pulled out some of the, I've been breaking those out. And hearing the panels and the retention and the teacher retention and the recruitment, you know, that was something that really jumped out at me is, you know, I know that you're having issues with recruiting special needs teachers. It's a very difficult deal. It's one of the toughest for us because we know that the kicks and the bites and the punches and the physical violence, workers' comp claims that we're seeing in your schools, is that a reason? Are people scared to go into that profession because of that type of thing? Or, you know, is it, what are we doing in local school divisions to make sure that we're providing a safe workplace in those special needs units? The training, the aids, the, you know, the safety equipment that they need? And those are very, very difficult claims, but it's something that's jumping. It's on our radar. It sounds like it's definitely on your recruitment radar. So just to point those out. And then the rest of the departmental injuries, we see 4,300 custodians, 4,800 school nutrition employees, school transportation, roughly 3,000 injuries there. Maintenance, safest working groups of employees. And when you break down the pie charts and you all have got these, you could see that, you know, basic, the percentages of these or our teachers are having roughly 60% of the injuries, which is why you're hearing from us. We've got online training available to you. Put the teachers through slips, trips and falls, falls from heights, lifting, strains and sprains, you know, educating them on the proper shoes, getting them step stools, step ladders, trying to encourage them to ask custodians to help them hang things so that they're not accessing heights. Because what we know is, you know, not only do we have the injuries and we've got, you know, I'm not worried about the cost. The cost is what it is. But in my world, that cost is workers' comp. In your world, a teacher that gets hurt falling off of a chair decorating a bulletin board is not in your classroom teaching. So then you're bringing in a substitute teacher that isn't paid for by workers' comp. And you have a teacher that isn't your best teacher in that classroom because they had a workers' comp claim. And that is, ties these two together really closely. So if we're promoting that safety and pushing that training, not just to train so we can check the box, but we're training because we need you in that classroom. We care about you. I want you in here because you're my best teacher and I'll get you a step stool so you don't fall, then, you know, maybe that, you know, maybe that's a good thing. And I, you know, I truly believe, you know, this is not an insurance, this is about, you know, for 15 years, we've been talking about this and trying to push these programs out into schools. And I know that there's a big, big link there. So, you know, dollar amounts, we've had the severe injuries. We've had the tough injuries to the custodians, the ladders, the electrical, the lockout-tagout, the falls out of aerial lifts. We've had the maintenance guys, the very tough, the ladders, the electrical, the chemicals, the slips and falls, the school nutrition in the kitchens, the slips and falls in the serving lines, the falls in the freezers, the rotating the stock in the freezers and the refrigerators that were built way too small for those schools so they have to rotate that stock continually. You know, we know that we've got those. Transportation, you know, those are tough ones because of, this is a transportation claim. This is a driver. It's a, it's going to be a very, very difficult workers' comp. It's a difficult auto with students and other folks involved. And that's where you see some of those costs. You know, that's why there's more costs in transportation because some of the auto accidents can drive really large claims. When bus drivers slip down the steps or fall out of the back of the bus doing a loading and unloading activity and they can't drive their bus, you know, they tend to spend time out of work. So those are, you know, tough deals. Instructional, the cost breakdown, you've got some of those. That's, that's pretty much with the percentages. You still see that instruction are still driving the costs. So, school board or school superintendents, obviously, I know that you've got your department heads involved in these. But what we're telling folks in our schools is we want them to know who's injured in their departments. You know, know who's hurt. Know, principals knowing who's hurt in your schools. What teachers, custodial, maintenance, food service, that pat on the back. We're constantly, you know, we're trying to get claims reported to us as quick as we can so that we can provide immediate medical attention and get medical treatment to injured employees. It's very important. We ask every school system to bring folks back to work, the school superintendents and finance directors and department heads. They're used to us asking, hey, can you find some alternative duty to provide for an employee so that, you know, we're not having to say to employees that you got hurt at work, but we don't have a job for you, so you're out until we can find something for you to do or bring you back. We would like to try to accommodate those injuries and those restrictions so that we can, we can help them get better faster. We're asking everybody to do good accident investigations. We look for pictures on every auto claim or property claim. If we can get pictures around an injury or where somebody slipped and fell or a general liability where a parent fell or a student fell, then we can take those pictures and work those claims a little bit better. You know, a lot of communication. A lot of our training that we deliver to your employees is based off of the injuries that we're seeing in these graphs. So those are important. A lot of, a lot of safety and what's important for, you know, what I would like for, you know, if I had my perfect world for school board is I want you to know and recognize when folks, if you, I want you to know what your fleet is doing. How are our bus accidents? What are we doing? How long, have we driven a month, two months, three months without an accident? Or how are our maintenance folks doing or our custodians or our school nutrition? How are our sports staff departments performing? Are we having a lot of injuries? Are we having, or are we doing better than we were in the past before we started providing that training? And, you know, what we're looking for doing here is that we're communicating a values-based safety message. We're not trying to push safety because we're going to write you up. It's not a regulation. It's not a policy. You know, our safety programs from the top, from the board to the superintendents to the department heads, is we care about you. We want you safe. We want you teaching in the classrooms. We need you doing a good job. We, the buildings are spotless. We could see our faces in the floors. And we've got the best custodians in the region. And we appreciate that. And given those folks that, that pat on the back, you know, that they, it's just tough to, it's just a good thing to see when that is happening. So, you know, proactive risk control, was talking to Keith a minute ago. He said, hey, we're having a, bringing some custodians back. Can you come in and talk to them and do a safety training? We're there. We'll give those guys or those folks a good hour of, hey, you're so important to these schools. You keep them safe. You keep them clean. Here's what you need to know about safety. Ladders, aerial lifts, lockout-tagouts, wear the right shoes. You know, wear your safety glasses when you're mowing, weed eating and all of that. And hopefully, what we'll do there is we'll have less injuries in that custodial department. And those folks will feel appreciated and safe. So, you know, that kind of stuff is available to everybody in this room. You will, whether it's us or any provider, you will have people that will come in and train your folks. They will come to your in-services and they will help you take care of these employees. Leadership, there's been several mentions of that. And it's the same goes with school boards, but also with leaderships is just responsibilities. Responding to safety issues. You know, a safety issue that we see regularly, whether it's water coming into a classroom or, you know, we're looking at roof maintenance plans and building maintenance plans. And I think that's a big thing for this group is that we're looking at the safety of our, and it was, has been mentioned with the teacher shortage issue. Facilities, AC, the shape of our facilities. Or do we have good, safe facilities? When you walk into the school, are we seeing tiles that have got mold and water damage? And if you, you know, those types of things with teachers coming into that classroom every day and they see that, they see that ceiling tile that hasn't been replaced, then, or am I getting mold or my kid, you know, and y'all have heard it and it becomes a, all of a sudden, it's a big one. It can get really, it can get big in a hurry. So from a board standpoint, talk to those maintenance guys. What do our facilities look like? What do we need to do to make sure that, you know, we may not be able to build all new schools, but we might have some bad steps or a bad ramp or the lighting coming into this building is not good. It's unsafe. And we have people falling when we come into the building. Or, you know, we've got discolored ceiling tiles or the air quality or whatever it is. So it's not just a recruitment or an education, but it's also a safety, risk management issue that I think is, relates to everything that's been discussed this morning. So delegate the authority. Get the information and training to provide to these folks. Get them what they need to do the job safe and expect them to do it safe. If I give you the safety glasses, I expect you to wear them. We give you a pair of work boots or non-slip shoes. We expect you to wear that stuff to keep yourself safe. So it goes both ways on a lot of this. Resources, you know, one of the things that I'd marked down that we did, we did last year and, because I think it's applicable, but, and so that you know. But we bought like 60,000 seats for first aid CPR and AED training for every school in the state. So that you know that we can, we have an online answer for every one of your teachers in the Commonwealth of Virginia to get a free first aid CPR and AED training. So, you know, we've got the 60,000 seats for the teachers. You know, if your teachers are having to pay $25 a person to get their first aid CPR or AED, you can eliminate that and run them through a program that we or any of your insurers are going to make available to you. So, you know, by my count, if we've got 100,000 teachers, or, yeah, 100,000 teachers having to pay 25 bucks a head for first aid CPR and AED, that's two and a half million dollars unfunded mandate every three years. We've got that for you, you know, and you can get that kind of stuff made available. So, you know, we've got, you know, trying to help. Safety teams, great ways to promote safety in your schools. Get a teacher, a custodian, a maintenance, a food service, a bus driver and have them coming together to meet on a quarterly basis. I've had in our counties, I've had county commissioners in our schools. I've had school board or different people. Want to just stop by and see what they're discussing at these safety meetings or do a safety walkthrough. If you've got a safety committee, we've got guys that will come to those meetings and take your safety committee on a walkthrough of a school and show them, here's, here's some things that could cause an injury or could cause a fire or, you know, we do these hazard inspections of schools. So you've got, bless you, we've got those available to you. We talked a little bit about the return to work. You know, we have a lot of different guidance on this because it's just a big thing that we deal with, with trying to improve safety. We've got in-school safety campaigns for, you know, you're irreplaceable. Please stay safe. You matter. You know, your safety is important to the school division. So we've got posters and water hazards and ladders and use the right step stool, just things that you can, like good culture building, safety material that doesn't cost you anything that you can put out into your schools and try to, you know, if what we're talking about is retention and trying to make our people feel important and that we care about them and doing a better job of all of that to get people to want to stay there, then, you know, we're all about helping you do that. And if we can help that with health and wellness and some of this safety material, maybe it's something that is kind of been out there in front of you that maybe didn't reach the level of, we really need to do something on that. But with some of the discussion today, maybe, maybe we can help you with some of this and trying to promote some of these training programs and getting you information. The property casualty. So we, I took, you know, a list of all of our property casualties. So we've been through the comp, injuries, keeping people safe. The property casualty is, this is the number of claims that we see or have seen in the pool in that same timeframe. So 15 crime claims, 300 school board legals, not many, 1,400 property claims, general liability, 2,600. Those are your slips and falls, not student GL. This would be parents coming into the building, slips, falls, outside the buildings at the sports complexes, a hole, the mowers throw rocks and rip up somebody's car. Those are GL claims. Increasing number of student accident. 7,000 student accident claims. This is one that's really jumped out in the last little bit just with the number of uninsured students that we've got in our schools. We're seeing what used to be or deteriorating health insurance for parents. What used to be a, my kid got hurt at school and it was a $15 copay. I never filed the claim. Now my insurance doesn't pay the first thousand. So I'm sending these claims in to get reimbursed for my copay and those doctor visits. And, you know, what we've been battling is trying to get all of that information inside of 90-day window. And for every school superintendent, finance or operations person in here, y'all know that we have been battling on, we've got to get student accident claims in 90 days. We've got to get them in quicker so that we can touch base with the parent and deal with those. 10,000, 11,000 fleet claims. So over a 12-year period, that's about 1,000 fleet claims a year involving yellow bus fleet. We see very few incidents in maintenance vehicles. So these are mainly yellow bus claims. And, you know, the cost on these, auto. So for school board, for all intents and purposes, what I feel and what is backed up by these numbers, our biggest risk in this room every day is transporting those kids to and from school on those buses. And I can't tell you, outside of, you know, the workers' comp supporting is maybe a little more difficult for school board members. But, you know, if this is, if there's an area that we need support, it's on transportation safety and recognizing bus drivers that drive five years, 10 years, 15 years or for driving accident-free or taking care of those bus drivers. Because they have got a really, really ser, a heavy-duty job getting these kids to and from school safely. And, you know, it's just a, it's just one that And, uh, you know, it's just a, uh, it's just one that needs to be high on everybody's list in terms of support, uh, in public education. The costs, about a million dollars in crime claims. The student accident, you know, is a smaller number that, but that's just relatively a new program just in the last few years. School board legal, lots of defense. And I broke those out in the, in another chart just on what those are. The general liability, then you could see we've had roughly 50 million in auto and 60 some odd million in property claims. So, at the end of the day, you know, I added them up. We've handled 65,000 claims for roughly 240 million dollars in public education in the last 10 years. It's 250, that's a quarter of a billion dollars in insurance claims that we're working with on just, I think, just about everybody in this room's behalf. Auto, property, driving those. So, the property, when you hear those roof maintenance plans and the, the maintenance of the facilities, this, this is a big one. This is one that I, you know, whenever I hear Dr. Kot or, I'm not sure who mentioned it, but we don't have a budget for proper, or for maintenance or we're not able to fund those like we used to or we're having to. That makes me nervous because we know that we've got roofs that need to be maintained cause if the roofs don't get maintained and we have the hailstorm, then you've got a hundred thousand dollar property claim, which is fine. We pay, we take care of those claims. We have in a, you know, with tornadoes and storms that have ripped through southwest Virginia. But it's insurance and if you have those claims, you're gonna, your premiums can escalate due to claims experience. So, putting the prevention dollars in on maintaining and on the front end is gonna save you more money than having big claims on the back end. And that's as honest as I can be as somebody that ensures just about everybody in this room. We, I would rather you putting that money on the front and getting more bang out of your buck doing two or three or four roofs than insurance increases down the road for years to come until those claims fall off. And that's just something to think about. Bring those maintenance guys in and talk about it. Auto, we show this stuff to your bus drivers. This is what we, when we come in for in-service training and we bring bus drivers in for the meetings, this is what we're showing. This is, we have the buses, I've got 15,000 buses running every day of the week. And in those 15,000 buses, we've had 11,000 claims for the, the dollars. And, and again, it's not about the dollars, but $55 million is more than a couple of tail swings in a mailbox. These are serious, you know, these are, these are keeping kids seated on the buses, the sudden stops, the head-on collision, the, 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 the school bus stops. Uh, you know, trying to get folks to, let's try to drop them off and pick them up on the right side of the road. Anytime we can avoid a kid crossing a highway to get on a bus, we need to do it. Cause we don't need kids crossing the bus or crossing that road. Having bus drivers understand that we've gotta take our time, our following distances, all of, you know, just good driving and, you know, being able to show work zones and what happens when a bus, you know, you know, we do a lot, we do a lot of pictures in our training, Strater, you've been to every one of our presentations, a lot of the school superintendents come in here, um, I, Mr. Mullins. Uh, I would recommend and I would encourage everybody this year to ask your transportation directors, when is our bus driver in service this year? And show up for a few minutes and go see what they're talking about. Hey, I'd like to say a few words to our drivers, superinten-, you know, and make that appearance and just say, listen, y'all drive our kids safe every day. I keep up with, I know how many accidents you, last year you had one accident or two or maybe a, a couple. And I just wanna thank you for driving our kids safe and I'll support you in every way I can. Uh, you know, what the sheriff, we're having people passing our buses illegally. I'll talk to the sheriff for you, you know, and being able to make that, make that connection, your drivers will appreciate it more than you ever knew. And it's a great way to, to just go listen and see what they're talking about, you know, in, in their in-service. So, I would encourage that heavily, you know, know how your fleets are doing. We're, we're on them about wearing their seat belts and, 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 you know, just, you know, we have, we have mopeds and scooters and, and four-wheelers coming out, cutting out in front of them. And, uh, you know, we see these lots and, you know, just, we try to look at what's occurring across the state and show them, tell them stories of what they may could have done to prevent that incident. So, we try to use a lot of pictures, a lot of stories. You know, right now, we're talking a lot about work zone safety. Driving through, we're gonna have a lot of workers in the roadways, a lot of lane closures. We've had multiple incidents where buses have driven off the road because they clipped a, a cone or a, a concrete barrier in a work zone. So, and we've got, you know, the, the patch crews and the water crews and the, all those folks are out in the roadways right now. So, we're, we're talking to them about how to safely maneuver those different areas and, you know, where we've seen claims. Get to know, you know, just knowing what your bus drivers are dealing with, with passing cars, the loading and unloading zones, uh, how important that is in ge- keeping these kids safe around the school buses, uh, is just a very, very, it's a good thing to do. It's something, you know, y'all have got, you've got big counties with a lot of miles being driven. A lot of you have got a million miles a year going on those fleets. And if you've got that million, two million miles a year being driven out of that fleet and they're only having, you know, a handful of minor incidents, maybe a tail swing or a mailbox or, uh, you know, we struck a parked car and we didn't have an over-the-road accident, then good gr- you know, my, y'all are doing, we just can't thank you enough for what you're doing to get our kids to and from school safe. And, and that's just some really, some good things to know. So, good support for your drivers, communication with parents, uh, good work with law enforcement. You know, this is a big thing with your directors and, and counties. Involve in training, attend, understand the behavior and issues and the special needs issues. They're having to tie down the wheelchairs and wheelchair lifts and ramps and, you know, just the things that they're learning and training on with tie-downs and, and seat belts and things like that. You know, it's really, um, it's, it's very noble what they do and the, this, the work that they have to do to get some of these children to and from school safely. School bus safety week in October, love the bus. You could do a, a, you know, a nice thing and, and during school bus safety week, whether it's at a school board meeting or, or something like that, uh, involve in that. PTA Rotary Church Support, how are we doing? I would recommend everybody, you're starting to see, we're finally starting to be able to get some legislation moved in Virginia on cameras on the outsides of buses that are taking pictures of illegally passed. When, when a driver illegally passes a bus, I would encourage you to do some research into that and think about that in your school divisions. It's a great way to promote school bus safety. It's a great way to generate some revenue back into the fleet, uh, to pay for those cameras and add some digital signage, um, digital, digital recording devices on your school buses. And, you know, just maybe something to really look at in terms of being able to get, uh, you know, a, a stronger support for transportation. Property, tornadoes, fire, ice and snow, lightning, wind, theft, vandalism, earthquake, freezing pipes, water damage. You know, those have been pretty much what we see on the property claims. Outside of, there's not a whole lot we could do about mother nature other than just make sure that our roofs and drains are in good shape before winter and, and, and making sure that our buildings are properly maintained. You know, in fire, doing safety inspections, boiler rooms, breaker rooms, fire hazards and things like that in your schools. You know, this was a southwest Virginia, I don't know if there's any folks from Patrick County, but I actually was driving down through here about a couple of months ago and saw the new meadows of Dan Elementary School. But this school was, this, I believe this fire was started with a, a lizard lamp in a classroom over Labor Day weekend in September of 2012 or 13. But somebody had, it was a defective heat lamp over a, a lizard, the ma- the school and that, that lamp caused the fire at this particular school. And, um, yeah, so, uh, but this is a, it's a beautiful property now and, uh, I was really impressed with the work that they had done there. You know, we've seen them in pretty much all over the place, uh, you know, fire claims for whatever reason. But, um, school board legal and general liability. What we're, we typically, these have not been huge loss drivers for us. But what we're seeing on GL, the inside falls and the outside falls in the buildings, these are parents, non-scholes. We have E and O claims, the civil rights violations, discrimination claims, pretty much drive the majority of our litigation on school board legal and general liability. And in student accident, these are where we're seeing our student accident claims coming in from the schools. Roughly 2,000 physical education, gym class, uh, athletics, sports, roughly 3,500 of those. So, those are coming from all ranges of girls and boys, soccer, volleyball, baseball, football and, uh, playground injuries, we track those separately as well. So, you know, when our guys are on site, they're looking at mulch depth and the safety zones and the landing zones on, uh, on all of those things. As we do our safety inspections and our walkthroughs, we're looking at steps and handrails and non-slip strips. We're looking at the playgrounds and the mulch depths and the slides and just the safe areas of, you know, what we're providing for these children. And this summer is gonna be a big time to do that kind of stuff. You know, these folks are gonna be in these schools working through to make them, you know, we've still got, you know, a quarter left of school. But, you know, these are the things that as we're going out as safety guys that we're looking at, trying to promote and educate folks on to, to prevent. Now, mulch, it costs money, but the other side is the upset parent that's coming because the kid broke their arm because they fell and there wasn't any mulch. So, it's one of those getting on the front end as opposed to the back end and a lot of this safety and risk management. And, uh, you know, just making sure that we've got good, safe areas and playgrounds for these children. So, you know, in terms of risk control, um, we're available, any of your folks are available from an insurance to come in and talk to your employees, supervisors, principals, directors about coverage. We love to review claims history with our members, looking at claims, how are we doing? Are we getting better? Looking at our analysis, we could take your losses versus what we're seeing across from the state. How does your custodial group compare or maintenance or transportation? How are we doing on accidents? You know, looking at that, if you need any assistance with programs, safety programs, uh, safety committees, uh, you know, we're more than happy to help anybody in this room, whether you're in VACORP or not, get a safety committee formed. Or what can you do to get some people moving around safety? Training, safety surveys, making sure that we're taking advantage of that kind of stuff cause it, you know, it's, it is free to just about everybody that's insured by anybody. Any written programs, policies, you know, it's a, one of the things that we get a lot of, we get a lot of requests for hold harmless or we've got a group using a school or they need to do this. You know, can you, can you give us a review of a policy or a hold harmless agreement? We do, it's stuff that comes in every day. So, you know, any of this return to work, alternative duty and, you know, what I, what we see is with good risk management, you're gonna have less injuries to your people, good safety programs. You're gonna have less bus accidents, you're gonna have less injuries to your maintenance, your custodial, your school nutrition. We could generate those kind of reductions with some attention. It's not a, it's, it's work, but it's not, it's good work. Uh, and, and it's good for employees and it's good for morale. And by doing it, you know, we generate a lot of wins in these programs. You get these people on safe, it's good for your students cause they've got the teachers in the classroom, you know, we've got good folks that are taking care of it. It's good that our, our fleets are operating that fleet safely and that we're looking good running up and down the road, um, you know, and that we, you know, this is a tough one. I, I don't, I don't have the details on it because I don't know whether it was preventable, who was at fault, but I know that I've got a tough one right here. And that, uh, you know, that, that that school division's gonna be hurting, that school superintendent's hurting. And, you know, it's just, uh, you know, that, that's just, it's just tough. So, with these department heads, we can assist risk managers, your HR people. A lot of this stuff ties back into HR, risk managers, how folks run their departments. It's good for school superintendents, it's good for boards to have a good safety record and for your staff to coming in and saying, hey, our, our experience mod went down 10 points this year and we're gonna save $15,000 in workers comp. That's a good thing and we could gener- you could generate that kind of stuff. Real dollars and savings by having good loss experience. You know, and it's obviously good for when you're in pools such as VACORP and BML, when the members are clean, it's good for all, it's good for all the school divisions, it's good for the counties. So, you know, a lot of, uh, a lot of hopefully helpful information for you all to ask some, maybe ask some questions on how we're doing, what can we do to support? I believe, you know, in terms of my notes, any, any questions, I, this has, there hasn't been a whole lot of questions this morning, so I'm gonna take a chance just in case. But do you all have any questions about safety or anything dealing with school buses or fleets or GL or, you know, Craig pretty much covered everything on the school board legal. I think that's good, but any questions about anything with risk management or safety? I, I'm for anything that's gonna get folks to slow down and stop for a school bus. You know, California, the California, they actually have the bus driver get out of the bus and walk the children across the road. It's they, but they have an aid on every school bus, which is, there's your school bus, that's your seatbelt issue is, you know, that's, which is the big one is, if we're gonna, if you go towards something like that, you're gonna have to put an aid on every school bus because you gotta make sure if you have seatbelts on buses that everybody's wearing the seatbelt. Or having the electronic device in the bus to make sure that the bu- the driver knows that everybody that's on that bus is buckled up. Because I, you know, I believe your liability increases if you have a seatbelt, but they're not using it as opposed to. And, uh, you know, and on, we've seen, you know, we've seen our, knowing that we're handled tens of thousands of bus accidents, we've handled the rollovers. You know, we've been very fortunate with, you know, that, that our children have been safe in these school buses in Virginia. The compartmentalization, the way that they're constructed were really good. And there's been a couple, I've seen, somebody was telling me, you know, I saw that video of a kid where their, their school bus or their backpack dropped a latch and a child, a child last night on the news fell out of a school bus in, uh, Arizona, was it? Or I forget what state it was. Uh, and then we saw one fell out of a church bus last week somewhere. So, which, you know, those incidences get those directors, those transportation directors will take those and they will be, they will have their guys looking at, is everything latching properly? Are we, are so, secure and safe? But, you know, it also goes to making sure that we've got good, good school buses running the roads as well. So, any stop arms, anything that we can, you know, I like these school bus cameras. I like these cameras, I like them. I, you know, I think once you put that camera and you get those, you get the, the motoring public in your county hears that there's cameras on your buses and you'll get a ticket in the mail if you pass a bus illegally, I think it's gonna shot, it's gonna knock it down pretty good. I think you do, if, if they're not all buckled in, I think you'd get with, I think you're dealing with that issue, but the fire, you know, school bus fires are a lot more prevalent than, than, you know, the accidents that we're having, they're safe in that compartment. You know, we had one up I-64 on I-64 just a couple of months ago. And, uh, you know, the, the driver was able to get everybody evacuated just within 30, you know, within a, within 30, 40 seconds, they were to get everybody off that bus. I worried with some of these children that they may not be able to get, you know, that, that seatbelt issue may be difficult for one driver trying to get everybody unbuckled and get them out the back of the bus. I, I think the, the space, the, the fire issue, the time it takes to evacuate a bus, the liability if they're not wearing them, I just, you know, it's, it's, you know, I, I, I'm think we're fine without, I would just, I wanna make sure that we're taking, that these drivers are being trained, that we've got the best drivers on the road, that we support them and, and, you know, incentivize them. we support them and, and, you know, incentivize them, you know, with, with, with that pat on the back for multi-year service awards for driving safe and, uh, you know, really trying to get them, you know, involve them in the training, uh, you know, or involve them, you know, the, one of the best things I think we could, you know, we need to do, and your drivers will tell you this, is just educating children on how to behave on a bus and what to do and how to cross a road safely and why they need to wait on that driver's hand signal. You know, those types of things will, that will get, that will make them very happy and feel better about driving those buses. So, you know, and that's what, what we hear and what we see. So, all right, y'all. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to come in and spend some time with you. Thank you.
Now, we're gonna shift gears and go to our panel discussion. We're gonna have a panel of superintendents discuss, uh, the exact same issue, teacher shortages. I'd like for you to welcome, uh, Dr. Jared Cotton from Henry County, Dr. Keith Paragon from Bristol City, and Dr. Jeff Perry from Withfield County. And I'm gonna turn the microphone over to them.
Okay, uh, thanks a lot, Mr. Hunley. I'd also like to just start off by saying thank you to Gina Patterson and the staff at V S B A and Mr. Hunley and the Board of Directors from V S B A for continuing to remember Southwest Virginia as we provide professional development across the Commonwealth. It's great to be able to, uh, have professional development so close to home and we appreciate that opportunity. Um, also like to say thank you to the folks from Withfield for, uh, for hosting this event, Dr. Perry and his staff. Uh, we know it takes a lot to put these, uh, types of programs on and so thank you very much. I'm honored to be on the stage today with two of my colleagues. Uh, Dr. Cotton is the 2016 Region Six Superintendent of the Year and Dr. Perry is the 2017 Region Seven Superintendent of the Year, so let's, let's acknowledge them just for a second. Uh, Dr. Perry gave me that script to read, um, and he, he also told me I was here just as eye candy, so what, take that for whatever it's worth. You know, I typically, um, uh, try to start off presentations with a little humor, however with the seriousness of this topic, it's almost hard to do, but it was, it's gonna be really hard to resist the urge to, to start off a joke with three superintendents walk into a meeting room full of school board members, but I'll leave that punchline to the, to the rest of you, you can, you can fill in the blanks. But, um, you know, anyway, for years, we have been hearing about, I'm, this, I'm in year 22 of my career, and for years, we've been hearing about the impending teacher shortage. Some of us have already started to experience that, uh, teacher shortage, but in my opinion, school divisions either fall into one of two categories. You're either in a teacher shortage crisis or you're getting ready to go into a teacher shortage crisis. Uh, we saw some of the data that was shared by Ms. Pitts and that was some great information that she provided, and we're gonna share some more that maybe are on a more local level about how that impacts us and, and maybe some ideas about how we can improve that. Um, you know, currently, um, in Bristol, we, um, we have two positions that are still unfilled, they have been unfilled for the entire year, and we have five other positions of teachers where, uh, there's some licensure issues involved. And that may not sound like a lot, but we're a really small school division and, uh, you know, we only have about 200 teachers total, so, you know, seven of our teachers are experiencing those issues, and I know some of you have, have many more dire situation than that. I might have to be two-handed here. So, uh, you know, what, what is the problem? Is, you know, first and foremost is finding certified teachers. We've, we've already talked about, or Ms. Pitts has already talked about some of the areas where we have difficulties in finding certified teachers. Uh, for Bristol, and for an example is, you know, we're struggling with language teachers, uh, finding a school, we still have not filled a school psychologist position, uh, we've got one teacher who's teaching a theater class that doesn't have the credentials, uh, teacher working on tech ed, uh, licensure, and then of course, like many of you, I'm sure, special education. Also finding those teachers in high needs, I've already mentioned, uh, some of those already, however, we're looking at our current staffing issues going into the 2017, 18 year, and we could have three math teachers, uh, to hire if, you know, depending on what happens. And that's, uh, for us, that's certainly concerning because not only is it hard to find applicants with, with the math endorsement, it's even harder to find great applicants with that math endorsement, so that's certainly a concern. Um, part of the other problem is, um, is finding special ed-related services. I don't know how many, uh, divisions here actually hire their own folks in speech and OT or PT and school psychologists, but currently in, in the, I just, I was in Norton the first semester of the school year and now I'm in Bristol, and in both of those school divisions, we did not have our own, uh, speech folks, we did not have our own OT, PT, we, we have those folks come in, we actually have one speech teacher in Bristol, but the remainder of the services we contract out for. So those, it's becoming harder and harder to find those folks, which as you know, as a superintendent and a school board member, that means it becomes harder and harder to afford those positions as demand goes up, or supply goes up, demand goes, supply goes down, demand goes up. Then, of course, staffing in a rural school division, we don't have the issue, I think, on the I-81 corridor that many of the school divisions that are off the I-81 corridor have. However, we're starting to see that more and more even on the I-81. I've served in both localities and I can tell you it's hard either place, but once you get off of I-81 and you start heading over into the coalfields and, and other areas, it becomes even more difficult because the millennial generation, they're always look, they're more interested not in how much they're gonna make, but what they're gonna do with the money that they make while they're there. And if you don't have those activities and the, uh, entertainment that those millennials are looking for, it makes it more and more difficult, uh, to not only find those teachers, but also to retain them. So why, why is there a shortage? And, uh, Ms. Pitts actually hit on this, low compensation. Being in Southwest Virginia and bordering three other states, several of us have, are facing competition factors with other, not only school divisions in Virginia that are paying more than we do, but we're competing with other states who may pay more than we do. So we've got already the teaching profession, there's a low compensation issue, and then when you start competing with other localities, um, who may be paying a little bit more, it makes it even tougher. I will take this opportunity just to, to throw out an advocacy issue too. I'm sure that many of you are aware that, um, localities in Northern Virginia receive something called a COCA, a cost of competing adjustment, where they're able to pay their teachers more because of the cost of living expenses that they have there. I will tell, and, and because they're also competing against Maryland and DC with those salaries. I don't know how Southwest Virginia has been left out of that equation because we, even though the cost of living is not as high, we still face those same, uh, cost of competing issues, and I hope that as you talk to your legislators, you'll continue to advocate for a COCA for Southwest Virginia. Also, then, of course, another issue of why we're having a shortage in teachers is, uh, high stakes testing. Who, you know, we're already not paying teachers very well, then we're bringing them into a classroom and telling them that they, we're expecting them to do, uh, amazing things with, with our students who a lot of them are suffering from issues of poverty and, and, and have special needs, but we put that high stakes pressure on our teachers, we pay on pennies and peanuts and expect, you know, to be able to recruit those folks and it's, we, we're setting ourselves up for failure if we expect to continue to follow that trend. Rising tuition costs, um, if any of you have students in college, you know how much that, uh, can, can set a family back. And so then we're sending a, we're sending our 18-year-old students to college who are taking out, uh, exorbitant student loans, and then we're telling them whenever you get out of college, we're gonna pay you 30,000 and we know you may owe 120 or 150,000. And, uh, for us to continue to expect that we're gonna fill those open teaching positions whenever they, students have that type of debt and we're paying those types of wages, I think we're only kidding ourself. And we, I think all of us can agree that we wanna have the highest quality teachers that we can have, and we wanna make sure that they've met, uh, stringent requirements before they get to us. We also know that we're, some of us in the room are probably really good test takers and some of us are probably not. We miss out on a lot of great potential educators and teachers, not because they can't teach, it's because they're not good test takers. Our students face those same issues, and so we, I'll give you an example. In Norton, we had a, a math te, an eighth grade math teacher who had the highest SOL scores in eighth grade math in the entire state and didn't have the proper license to teach eighth grade math. And it was, you know, just because you have a license doesn't mean that you're gonna be a good teacher, and the fact that you don't qualify for a license doesn't mean that you can't be a good teacher. So that's certainly a problem as well. Um, we all probably lived in a generation where, uh, teachers, uh, and school staff were highly respected in our communities. As you know, that, that certainly has changed over time and a lot of that has to do with high stakes testing, and it's hard to encourage the millennials, uh, to go into a profession where they don't think that they're gonna receive respect. That goes, talking about the millennial generation too, um, you know, when you look from the changes in, um, the level of service, the level, the heart, the servant's heart that the greatest generation, those folks that came back after fighting in World War II had, and you look at the level of service that our millennials that they wanna pour into, it's, it's a completely different generation, five or six generations out. And so we're asking folks to work in an industry where you, your biggest rewards sometimes come from the heart and not from your pocketbook, and, um, you know, that generation just, it's, it's different. Not that it's better or worse, and we can all draw our own conclusions about that, however, we're, we're serving a completely different generation. And then, um, you know, we all are focusing more on vocational training, and so as we have, um, you know, we encourage our kids and our students to get more vocational credentials where a lot of the jobs are, and actually jobs that pay higher than, you know, teachers pay, uh, we're losing teachers in that area as well. And just to take it, um, to make it local, um, UVA Wise for the coalfield areas, that was one of the areas where we've got most of our teachers, just to give you some idea about how the, uh, the, they're coming up through the ranks in our teacher ed programs. Um, in 2011, there were 60 completers in UVA Wise, in 2012, 58, 2013, they had 48 completers, 49 in 2014. I would read off my notes, but I got this really small print that I thought I could read. Um, 41 in 15, 42 in 2016, and in 2017, only 29 completers came out of the University of Virginia at Wise. And if you're, uh, if you're a school board member in Norton, Wise, Dickinson, Lee, Scott, you know already that Russell County, a lot of your teachers are gonna be coming from UVA Wise, and to see this downward trend is, uh, certainly very concerning. What, how, what's going on currently at UVA Wise Teacher Ed Program? Their total enrollment is, is 29 teachers in the teacher ed program. Graduates at, at the semester were 17. Of those 17, seven were hired to do their student teaching, so they're actually, they're not doing their student teaching, they're actually in a job already, um, because of the teacher shortages that we're already experiencing. And, you know, it doesn't take a very scientific person to realize that if you've already hired those student teachers to teaching jobs while they're still in college, that also reduces the pool the following year. So we're gonna, you know, we, we filled a gap this year, but we're gonna have another gap next year. And then, um, the, many of our teaching majors, uh, they're, they're getting knocked out because of the assessments it takes to get into teacher ed programs, not just the tests that they have to become licensed, but because they can't, those students aren't good test takers and don't pass the test to get into a teacher ed program. And then finally, the, um, in 2000, the class of 2016, 11% of the students that came in as freshmen at UVA Wise went into the teacher ed program or signed up for the teacher ed program. This year's freshman class at UVA Wise, only 4% of incoming freshmen have signed up for the teacher ed program. So you can see, if you look back at the last slide, there's already a decline coming into this year, and we see that this year's freshman class, there's a significant decline in the number of students enrolled. There is a crisis ahead, and we've gotta do everything that we can to prepare for that. And just some, I won't go through each of these numbers, but it, one of the things that is very concerning to me about this chart, and you could probably see it better on, on your handout, but when you look at the typical areas like PE and social studies where we used to have so many applicants for those positions that, you know, we could shake a stick at them, those numbers are declining, and I, these, these are UVA Wise numbers, but I'm sure it's, it's the same across the state. So, uh, that is kind of a quick summary of what's going on here locally in UVA Wise, and I'm gonna turn the program over to my colleague, Dr. Cotton.
Thanks, Keith, and, uh, thanks for having me here today. I'm happy to talk to you about this issue we're dealing with. I'd like to recognize my school board chairman, Mr. Curtis Milner, who's here, and a board member, uh, Dr. Joe DeValt. I appreciate them making the ride up with me early this morning. Um, happy to be here to talk about some shortages that we, well, not happy to talk about these shortages, happy to be here. And can you hand me the, uh, little, do floppy there? Thanks. All right, um, as we talk about the shortages, you already heard about them earlier, uh, today, and, and that's real, that's what we're dealing with in Henry County, in particular, special education, as many of you all are dealing with that right now. I, I've just found out recently, I have about nine vacancies right now for the upcoming year, and we've been working hard to fill many of those. We've managed to fill three of those, two of them came from internal, uh, folks in our school divisions, so, uh, what we appreciate is, we're, we're trying to think outside the box, but that's a very real problem because we finished this school year with about three vacancies that were never filled. Um, some other areas, and unfortunately, these are coming up one at a time, so let me just get through this quickly. Uh, but the other areas that we heard about earlier today, I won't recap, but obviously, um, we're facing these in particular with mathematics. Uh, when you see middle school on there, the challenge that we're having in middle school is the certifications in the particular areas that our students are, our, our teachers are able to teach, and, and that continues to be a challenge for us. Uh, when we look at some positions here in Region Seven, and, um, let me get through this here, um, we see some positions that were unfilled in Region Seven. I would say, I'm in Region Six, I would say that these are the same areas that we're struggling with as well. Again, you see special education, foreign language, a challenge for us, as well as mathematics. And as you heard Keith talk about having to use contracted services, that's extremely expensive in regard to, uh, is much more expensive than hiring a teacher, and many of us have had to, to resort to that as we, we've worked through that. So the challenges that we have, and, and of course, the three of us have talked about these different areas that really, um, because you really have to unpack the, the issue so that you have a good idea of what's causing it. Low compensation, we've already talked about, but that really has to drive how you do things moving forward. I know in Henry County, we have spent a lot of time focusing on compensation. What we've learned is not only, uh, were we not bringing them in at a competitive salary, but we were losing ground throughout the scale. Uh, what we found in particular, when we got to about year 15, our salaries were, were not competitive, so we were losing teachers. So that has to be a priority, and that's been a priority for us. Our poor facilities, obviously, we've had to work on capital improvement. Here's the reality, we have no capital improvement fund. As I look at my board members, we've been talking about that. Uh, we used to have a $2 million capital improvement fund, now we have no capital improvement fund. We've had to use savings from previous years to upgrade our facilities, so that's challenging. And matter of fact, uh, we even have schools that have been having major HVAC issues that we've been trying to work on. The feeling of isolation, um, we find in rural schools where the networking is so important, the collaboration is so important, where we've had to really look at different ways to bring teachers together, using social media, uh, online opportunities, collaboration opportunities built in to the yearly schedule so that our teachers can work together. But here's the reality, sometimes you have a teacher in, in a small school division that's the only one teaching that content for the whole school division. So that really means that you need to reach out beyond your school division, our friends in Martinsville and other localities that are nearby looking for ways that we can collaborate across school districts. Uh, the high number of at-risk students, I mean, let's just be honest, I mean, the, the challenges we face, we're, we're approaching 70% free and reduced lunch in Henry County. And, um, one of the things that we've had to do is when we hire new teachers, we take them on a bus tour of the community, because the reality is many of our teachers had no idea what our students are facing each and every day. Um, it's challenging, it's difficult, but we hope we get as many that wanna do teaching for the right reasons, uh, but we continue to struggle and it's a challenge for them. Uh, we've talked about that, testing requirements, uh, failing schools. We're very fortunate in Henry County that our schools are performing at high levels, but that's not an easy task, so we, we continue to work hard to make sure that that happens. Like many of you, not only are we struggling to find qualified candidates, uh, we're trying to find candidates that look like our students. We want representation in our applicant pool, and many times in our community, we get feedback that we're not hiring, uh, teachers that represent our student population. our student population. And we continue to say that not only is there a teacher shortage, but there's a shortage of diversity in the teacher pool. So we've had to work on some grow your own programs, which we'll talk about when we get to some solutions here later. And of course, really pushing the value of education in the community, and making sure that our community has a vested interest in what's going on in education. I'll be frank with you, some of our issues we've had to bring up with budget, the community hasn't come out to support us in some of those instances for various reasons. And of course, the locality doesn't have a lot of extra money lying around to share with us. So we've had that, that challenge, as you all have as well, as well as declining enrollment. So when we talk about recruiting and retaining, that has to be a priority for us moving forward. There are some ideas Keith already talked about, cost of competing supplement. We've also talked about licensure flexibility. Patty Pitts is outstanding when it comes to that, because we have to call her all the time to figure out ways that we can do different things. And one of the things that I appreciate about you Patty is you always say, "Call." If you have a question, call and ask, because many times my HR director comes to me and says, "I don't know what to do. We can't make this happen." So we've had to really think outside the box, and I appreciate the support. Provisional time provided there, if teachers need more time to complete those requirements. We've looked at modifying some of the standards. We've really tried to look for flexibility, in particular, computer science and STEM. We really need to encourage the, that particular area, and I don't have teachers to teach that area. I had an engineering teacher at the high school, I had one at each high school, then I had one, they went between the high schools, and now I have zero. Because that person went off to get a position in the private industry, and I could not replace that person. So what I'm saying to my students is, I'm sorry, we don't have this option for you. So what we've had to do is partner with a community college to provide opportunities. But that's even becoming more challenging, because the community college is now cutting staff because of budget cuts. When we thought we solved the problem, we ended up with a new problem. So tuition forgiveness, there are some ideas that we've listed that we'll talk about, you know, improving facilities, we've talked about increasing that candidate pool. One of the things we've done is we've tried to grow our own. We've tried, we used to have a program where our paraprofessionals could go to college to become certified teachers. We had a great partnership with Averett College, and that worked for a period of time. We have Longwood College that works with our teacher, our future teachers, and that's another partnership that's been helpful. We also need flexibility, and of course, no one wants to work for a failing school, so we certainly want to continue to increase our academics so that people feel confident working in our schools. Okay, I'm going to pass it to Jeff.
Thank you. Good morning. Jeff Perry Superintendent here in Withfield County. Certainly glad that you're here with us in Withfield today. Always glad to have the V S B A come down, and always glad to see educators with us this morning. As I began to think about when I first began to teach, actually, I began teaching in the city of Norton. And that first year that I got the call back from the superintendent that I was going to get a teaching job, I didn't ask him what I was teaching. I didn't ask him how many responsibilities I had. I didn't ask him how many sports that I would have to coach. I just said, "I'd be there Monday morning to start." We recently interviewed for a chemistry teacher, and this particularly chemistry teacher knew she was a blue-chip person. And so, as she began to talk to us, her first question was not, "When do I start?" Not, "What do I teach?", but, "Is there a signing bonus associated with this?" And we talked to her about, "Well, we really don't have a signing bonus." And then she asked, "Well, I'm going to probably need a relocation allocation." And we said, "Do you not live just twenty miles down the road on Interstate eighty-one? We can get a cattle truck and come down and get you and bring all of your stuff up." But that a little bit highlights what we are dealing with, is that I think many of you today, now you're a school board member, but you actually began possibly teaching. And when we taught, we taught because we loved it. We taught because we cared about kids. We taught because we wanted to see a difference and to make a difference in the world. The next generation of students that we're having, or next generation of candidates we're having, is much different. You know, we have to pay them for everything. I remember all the times that we had to do the sponsorship for the prom, or whatever it was, we did those. And we never even thought about getting paid, because we just thought that was part of our job. And now, anytime that we do something, we have lost, I believe, that servant heart. And because of that, we've lost a lot of candidates, and the school systems have actually benefited on your goodwill. They have benefited on your servant heart, because you taught for nothing and you worked for nothing. And now this next generation, however, doesn't have that same kind of commitment. So as we begin to look at this, part of what we want to say then, is that how can we help on various different levels? We don't have a lot of control over the federal level, of course, but there are some things happening in Congress right now, that if you have legislators that you know about on the federal level, they are supporting the rest legislation right now, the Rural Education Support and Training Bill. In that, there's three programs that would help some rural schools, and many of us are in that situation. And those, it provides scholarships and fellowships, so you've got to work in a rural school for three years, and then they will pay scholarship or fellowship for that. So as we go through this, if this will pass and actually become legislation, then this is something that a lot of our folks could probably utilize in terms of getting some folks in, and being able to recruit and retrain some people. I know at our local hospital here, we're having a very difficult time getting some physicians, and so now, they're picking up potential doctors that's second year in their residency. And they're paying for the rest of the, rest of their medical training for that. And so, they're not waiting any longer to get them when they're out of school. They're actually backing up now two or three years into school and saying, "We will pay you to go ahead and come if you work here for a certain period of time." Also, there's a forgiveness, a loan forgiveness piece, is that you've got to work in a rural school for five consecutive years, and they have up to almost $18,000 there in loan forgiveness. And then part of the National Board Certification, if you were to enroll in National Board Certification, they'll pay anywhere between five and $10,000 for the salary increases associated with that. One of the things that we wanted to spend a lot of time on is, how can school boards help retain, help retain candidates? And I think sometimes school boards feel like they're very removed from the process, but actually have a very important role in this. And I think one of the first things is provide stability in the central office. Make sure that you hire a good superintendent at first, and then make sure that that superintendent is aligned with the cultures and values of your particular community. If I'm not mistaken, I believe that the V S B A, along with some other agencies, helped replace over forty-some superintendents in the Commonwealth. There's a hundred and thirty-two school divisions, and so we replaced forty of those superintendents last year. So when we replace a third of the central office leadership virtually every year, there's going to be some instability there, there's going to be some anxiety there, there's going to be some frustration. Some programs that were working now, when the new superintendent comes in, she may not be as interested in those particular programs, and so things that folks have worked hard on now begin to slip away. So that stability piece, I think, one of the most important jobs school board members will ever have is hiring and firing superintendents. And so I think it's real important that you make sure that you get the right person in there to begin with. And then I think also, provide stability for staff. A lot of times, some school board members will come in, and they've got non-educational motivations. We're actually seeing more and more of this across the state now, that individuals are not coming on to school boards for educational reasons, they're coming on for taxing reasons. They actually want to reduce taxes. We actually, when I worked in another school division, we had the president of the Taxpayer Association ran for the school board and won. And of course, it was a major battle with that particular individual every year, because his whole thing was cutting back, always wanted to see the budget, always wanted to know where places he could cut the budget in. And so, his value was not in education, but it was in saving money. And so, I think that's another issue that we've got to kind of deal with. In established policy, and not micromanaged, you know, we, in some school divisions we've been in, we said that we don't need a superintendent, we don't need a head football coach, we don't need a principal, because we've got plenty of school board members that can do that for us. That we can just let them come out and do it. And so, I think, as you begin to look at duties, I think people really appreciate school board that understands their function, understands their role about what to do, and provide that stability for them. And then I think set clear expectations. I think a lot of times, we fail to do that, about what is your division about? What are your main goals? Today, if you were to ask folks in your division, "What are our main priorities? What are our main expectations? What are those? Is it different than it was yesterday? Is it going to be different tomorrow?" And when you have that kind of environment, it just doesn't lead to people's faith and stability in the division. And so, I think making sure we have some clear goals, get a good five, six-year plan, have some good priorities for one year, and then make sure you follow through with that. I think that providing focus and direction for the division is to allow stakeholder in that. So before you create that vision, make sure that you allow all your different stakeholders to have an input in that. And then develop that plan and remain faithful to that plan. Because I think so many times, we get the five-year plan, six-year plan, and then we put that in a very nice-looking folder, and then we never pick it back up again. And then those strategic goals don't match with what we actually do within the division. And create a clear academic focus. A lot of folks want to know that what we're about is teaching kids and about increasing student learning. Now, we all say that, but when we do particular things, that we give coaches extra stipends for coaching, or we give some folks some extra things, but then our people who are teaching don't necessarily have that same kind of priority given to them, then I think oftentimes, we send some, some different messages, and that begins to kill some morale that you would have in your division. And then create staff value as a main priority, that we're always looking about how we can get values of the staff into our plans, into the way that we operate on a daily basis. And then I think letter E is beginning to be more and more important, is that we've got to support staff in difficult times. I was in Wise County before, and we led a consolidation effort down there, and it, it got pretty contentious. I told folks that the hardest animal in the world that you'll ever kill is a high school mascot. And as we go through that, that there was some times where it became very difficult, because people were losing schools in their community. And so, my buddy who was second command at Sheriff's Department said, "I'll take a bullet for you, Jeff, as long as it doesn't hurt and it doesn't hit any vital organs." So, in that kind of support, you know, that is where our teachers need to support the most, when things go bad. When a teacher has a difficult year, and it's not his or her fault, but a lot of times, what school boards will do, and superintendents will do, is we're there as long as the pressure doesn't get too hot. Then when the pressure gets too hot, we tend to forget people's names, and tend to forget where they are, and tend to forget that we need to be committed to those individuals all the way through. Because if that doesn't happen, then I think everybody else begins to see, maybe there's another division that will kind of, will provide that kind of support. And I'm not talking about, if you don't have teachers doing their job. If they're not performing and they're not getting things done, then I think we have a responsibility to work on that too. Because we just recently heard a teacher over say that, we have a teacher, and she's kind of experiencing some issues, but a good teacher was saying that, "There's no reason for me to work hard. There's no reason for me to do all this extra work if right across the hallway, this individual's doing nothing." And then, she's getting paid the same thing that I am. So, I'm not talking about not making those tough decisions when people are not producing, but just making sure that when some things are tough, that we're there for our folks. Also, the thing that we've talked about in this particular chemistry teacher, now this year, we may or may not land this particular chemistry teacher, but in future years, I think as Dr. Cotton was saying, there's going to be fewer and fewer individuals applying for these jobs. And with that, we're probably going to have to look at some regional approaches about how we can join together with neighboring counties and see if we can get some people to work for us, and then maybe to travel throughout county and do some inter-divisional work, or actually go back to the old piece about the Savetan classrooms and some of those kind of things, where we did some things online, and that we were able to share some folks that way. Because not only is it the problem getting to be that the quality, or the quantity of teachers, but also the quality. For the first year last year, we took some elementary folks that we knew we shouldn't have taken, but there was nobody else left. And sure enough, those individuals have not worked out, and we're in a process of non-renewing some folks. But when you get to a point where you're looking at elementary folks, and there's not quality elementary folks, then that's a real, real issue. And then creating that sense of school family, making sure that people realize that they're a bigger part of something, and that we are there to support them. And then growing our own. I think we have got to really look about some folks in our own area, and making sure that those individuals are willing to come back home. How can the central office and superintendents help rural schools recruit and retain? Again, making staff feel more valued. I think that if you ask a lot of people why they leave a particular profession, compensation is always one. They've got to be able to turn on the lights and to be able to make a living. And right now, a teacher, and we actually pay more than most divisions in Region Seven, but even one of our teachers, a teacher with two children right now, is actually eligible for free and reduced lunch. So our salaries are just barely above that poverty line, and in some cases, it's not even above that. And so, when we have that kind of piece, then compensation is clearly a part. But the other part is they've got to feel valued. They have to feel like their opinions matter, that they have some input on what's happening, and that people do respect them. Also, we've got to value staff input and feedback. I think sometimes we value that input and feedback until it runs contrary to what we believe. And then when it runs contrary, we don't really think that's feedback, we think that's just meddling anymore. And so, we don't really value that, but I think the thing that we've got to do is that we've got to be open and listen to different opinions and to different viewpoints. Also, provide some division benefits in terms of wellness programs, perhaps some staff development, and allowing folks access to some technology that they can utilize. One of the things that we're looking at in our division for the upcoming school year, if it would work, is that we're going to have a school clinic that will be staffed by a clinical nurse or a family practitioner. And so, we'll actually have those clinics within our building, so if a teacher or has a teacher get sick, or one of their kids get sick, then they can just go down to the clinic and receive services right there. But there's a lot of little things that we did when I was out in Colorado, where we provided daycare. And so, if you were a staff member, and you had children, then you, we had daycare right there in the division, and you could bring your child to school, drop them off. And for a lot of our beginning teachers, we've had decisions made, "I can't go there because I can't find access to quality daycare." And so, it's oftentimes not the big things that make the difference, it's oftentimes the little things that make the difference. Also, as we go, as we go through this, is make sure that we match the staff strengths with their duties. A lot of times, we have people who love to teach American history or world history, but we stick them in government, because that's where we think we need them. And because they may not have that particular passion for that one particular subject, then that sometimes doesn't help them out in terms of, of making them feel valued there. Also, recognizing staff accomplishments, I know that all of us do that, at board meetings probably, is bring individuals in. Recognize staff accomplishments, and that is good, but also, it's, it's better too, if you're out in the division as a superintendent or a school board member, and you're patting folks on the back, and you're telling them, "I appreciate you, what you did with this, and how you did this," and the little things make a huge, huge difference. You know, we just completed a series of duty-free lunches. We went in and took over, the central office staff went in and took over for the elementary folks, so they would have a duty-free lunch for one day. So this was two hours, two and a half hours out of the day. We got notes back, that was the best thing we ever did for them. Now, we fought with the board of supervisors to get a two percent raise, we fought with the board of supervisors to get better buildings for them, technology for them, all those things. Best thing you did for them is came in and did duty-free lunch. You know, it's a piece to where we don't ever need to fail to realize, oftentimes, it is those small, little things that make a difference. And then also, support staff. We need to do a And then also, support staff, we need to do a better job, public relations, in terms of making sure that we tell the community how important it is for teachers. Right now, and this is one of the things that we did in a, in a local paper that we, we sent out, or we write an article about school matters and put it in the paper and, and put it on the radio, and one of the things that we talked about, that if you had kindergartners, and you sent them to a daycare center, if you looked at what you were paying for a daycare center, you would pay that facility for those twenty-some kids, you'd pay a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year for those hundred, or for those kids to go for that one kindergarten class. We don't hardly pay our teachers a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but private daycare would be getting that amount, and we do so much more than simply daycare. And so, we need to let folks know that our profession is valued, that we play an important role in this, and that probably, and a lot of you come from the same situation. I was born in a family where my mother, uh, dropped out of school in eighth grade, my father dropped out of school when he was a junior, and my sister dropped out when she was in the ninth grade. I was the first one to actually graduate from high school. And then Marcia Short's in the back, back there, and she graduated with me, and I tell folks, Marcia was a valedictorian, and I tell everybody that if it wasn't for Marcia Short and twenty-nine other people, I would have been valedictorian of Town High School. So, as we go through this, we didn't start out very well, and I remember the first day that I was in kindergarten, or in first grade, they didn't have kindergarten, when I was in first grade, and a teacher said, "Write down as many letters as you possibly can." And I was terrified, because I didn't know any of them. And I think the, the value of that is that public education has always been the great equalizer in America. Here, we don't take you because of your, your culture or your socioeconomic status, we take everybody. We take every single child in, and education has always been that single factor that has made the difference in the lives of so many kids. Like you, didn't have a single chance in the world, but public school gave you that one chance. And that is the thing that I think that made a difference in a lot of our lives, and we're at a point right now that we are under attack in a lot of different ways. And we have got to make sure that we begin to stand up for public school education, and make sure that we don't let this one thing that has made this nation great vanish from this nation. And getting good teachers in, getting good superintendents in, and getting good school board members in is a real critical part of that. So, as we go through this, we all have some of the same challenges, uh, that we will deal with, and I believe that we may have just a few minutes for questions, so if there are any questions, if you want to go ahead and direct that piece. Well, we certainly do appreciate the opportunity this morning, thank you.
Thank you.